With liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, as we come before thee this evening, we are so grateful for the blessings that we have received at thy hand. We're grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy in our country. We're grateful for this beautiful area that we live in, grateful for the opportunity of self-government. We're grateful for those who have gone before us and have prepared a way that allows us to enjoy these things, and we recognize their sacrifices. We're grateful for the commitment and sacrifice of our first responders, those who put themselves in harm's way to protect and defend us. We're grateful for those who serve in the military and all those others who do much that we may not be aware of to allow us to enjoy the lives we do today. We pray as we begin this meeting that thy Spirit may attend us, that we may have wisdom, that we can make good progress on the issues before us, and that we can remember the sacrifices of those before us and likewise leave a good heritage to those who come after us. Help us to be wise, to be measured, to be balanced, and to be insightful. We pray for thy Spirit upon our city, that we may be protected, that we can continue to have thy blessings upon us. And we ask for these things and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much, Stephanie, for that prayer thought. But before we open our open session, I have one matter of commendation. We had a Islandview Park survey that went to 4,800 households in last May, and we had 648 people participate that, which is a 13.5 percent response rate. Over 200 of those were entered into a drawing for free movie tickets and popcorn. If you were anonymous in your survey, you didn't get entered in, so you had to give us your contact information. And out of those 200, 180 said they would be willing to participate or would like to participate in a focus group held to help in the design planning of renovations for that park, which I think we had one focus group already start, and are we planning some more, I assume, with the Parks and Recs Committee? So I wanted to recognize Mark Alsop, who was one of our winners, and I'm hoping Mark is here. If not, is Aaron Clark or Kim Franson here? If they're not here, then I get their movie passes.
No, we'll get it, Joe.
So if any of you know Mark, if he shows up, point him out, and we'll get this to him. So all that for now. Thank you. We will go ahead, and the first item on our agenda is an open session. This is an opportunity for anyone in the public to come and speak to the council on any subject of municipal concern. I haven't had anyone sign up ahead of time, but I'd invite anyone who would like to speak to come to the microphone and state their name and their city of residence for the record, and share with us their comments for two minutes.
You mentioned that we have other items.
We, we, thank you, Stephanie. We do have some other public hearing or public comments scheduled. There's one scheduled on the reception center on the west side of the freeway and on the climate-controlled storage. And also, if you're here to speak about the Davis County Natural Hazard Pre-disaster Mitigation Plan, we'd love to have you speak during that section of the, of the, of the meeting. But if there's anyone here to speak on anything else, we invite you to come to the microphone and share with us your comments. We'd love to hear them.
So what I want to talk about on the agenda, but you didn't just mention it, so is it okay that I go ahead?
It is. Can you give us your name and city of residence for the record?
I'm Bailey Smith, Centerville. I live on Jennings Lane, just about four houses up from the 400 West Jennings Lane intersection that's on the agenda tonight. I, me and my husband are the parents of four young children. We've lived here for about three and a half years. I've been talking with Chief Child about this intersection for a couple months now. He has been so helpful and has been a great advocate for our neighborhood. I just wanted to express my concern for our neighborhood and show support for the four-way stop. The intersection that is mentioned is included in reading elementary SNAP plan. My children and other kids in our neighborhood cross that crosswalk each day to and from school. And because it is not a stop sign, there's no stop sign there, cars are flying through there, and they, I mean, it's very rare that a car stops for them as they're trying to cross to and from school. So for them, they have to wait until the car speeds through, and there aren't any, there aren't any cars until they can cross to get to school. The traffic study that Chief Child conducted, the results showed that there are equal number of cars in each direction, in all four directions, which I think warrants the need for the stop sign there. Lastly, I know that this has been up for discussion. I mean, people in my neighborhood have mentioned it over and over again, that have lived there for 20-plus years, and I know all of them support it, and all the people that are new members support it. I only know of one person who is opposed of it, and that one person doesn't live in our neighborhood. I know that we have kind of rallied together, and individuals have sent emails to Chief Child and left Facebook comments about the information that he posted on the website. And so I just, I just really think that the four-way stop is the best solution for that. I also think that fixing the curb and gutter to improve the visibility is a great idea. I just hope that we can get that four-way stop to help our neighborhood be safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bailey, for your comments.
My name is Kathleen Gilbert, and I'm a resident of Bountiful, but I'm also a voluntary unpaid board member of the Centerpoint Legacy Theater, which is located in Centerville. And it's on this topic in the RAP tax that I just wanted to make a brief statement that I know that you have a lot of considerations of organizations, nonprofits, that you could give those RAP tax monies to, but I hope that you will keep Centerpoint Legacy Theater in mind in a positive way. I think that this theater is a gem, and it makes a difference in the lives of so many people, not only residents of Centerville, but extended geographically beyond Centerville. As a parent of children who aren't, one of my sons isn't especially athletic, but loves the fact that this is something he has a talent and interest in, and so it gives that diversity to our neighborhood, gives them opportunities to excel and to be noteworthy in something besides sports and athletics. And it is such, has such high-caliber productions. As the chair of the Audit and Legal Committee for the theater, I want to assure you that we are very careful with the monies and are always trying to keep the budget under control. And, but we also need to technologically continue to advance so that we can attract patrons and so that the children and the adults that participate feel like they're a part of something that is spectacular and wonderful. And in doing that, we need to not only maintain the theater, but continue to add new technology, costuming, other things that, and so there are a lot of costs that the ticket prices even, they don't cover. So again, thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration. I hope that you will consider the RAP tax monies to be designated partially to Centerpoint Legacy Theater. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathleen. Is there anyone else who would like to speak now during the open session?
My name is Sunny Larson, and I live in Centerville on Jennings Lane as well, by the four-way stop. And I want to encourage the four-way stop, too. That's right close to my house. And we, we are not sure if this is still in the works, but they were thinking about adding a yellow line on Jennings Lane. We actually don't want the yellow line. We think that increases speed. But the other thing that I actually wanted to just bring up was just something to sort of put a bug in your ear. My, two of my kids were on the high school mountain biking team this year, and in our area, it's Viewmont, Woods Cross, and Bountiful combined. And then there's a program for the junior high school students. So my son from Centerville Junior High was on it as well. And we had to travel pretty far every time we wanted to ride on a mountain bike trail, even though we have lots of trails here. They're usually not good for mountain biking. They're more for ATVs and other motorized vehicles. And I'm pretty involved in the mountain bike community, so I know of some other communities who have built bike parks and bike trails. And I would love for something like that to be more accessible here in Centerville. I think we probably have space left where someone could, I know in Lehigh, a friend built one, and it was Eagle Projects. Some boys worked on them for Eagle Projects, and they had the land donated, and then they created a bike park. And it's actually a very family-friendly thing, where they have trails just for little tiny kids who are on those bikes that you push that don't have pedals, called striders, and all the way up to teenagers and parents. My family, we drive all the way up to Park City sometimes to go up to their bike park. And we have, I have kids from eight to 14, and then my husband and I bike as well. We drive all the way up there to go. And I know there's lots of kids in the area who do mountain bike, but we have to travel pretty far. And it's a great sport to get kids involved in, in our schools. We've had kids who don't exercise or get out at all, and they've become active just by joining the mountain bike team. And so it's a way to get kids off the video games and phones and everything, and get them out and be more active. So just a thought, and I am happy to work on that and get things organized, too. Thanks.
Thank you. And I might add that last year, citizens passed the Prop 1 tax increase that included money for trails. And I know our county commission is thinking about regional trails in addition to, you know, just things that would be done by cities. And they have more, yeah, more, more money to do a regional type of facility. So I would, I would encourage you to put a bug in their ear as well. And Robyn's on our transportation committee. She might have some comments on that.
Oh, I was going to say, the transportation committee is looking into it, but our Trails Committee has a new member just for that, and they are looking at the bike trails and what we could create here in Centerville. So our Trails Committee is very actively involved.
Great. Who is that? Is that someone I can contact?
Frederico is his last name. They just put him on the Trails Committee. He's big into the mountain biking.
So Mark Diamond is the chair of our Trails Committee, and I believe his contact information is on our website as the chair, or you can always email me from our website, and I'm happy to put you in touch with them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else while we're on a roll? Seeing none, I'll close the public, excuse me, the open session, and we'll turn to our business agenda, the first item, which is minutes review and acceptance of both the August 25th Joint City Council Trails Committee meeting and the October 18th Council meeting.
I'll note that the Trails, the Joint Trails Committee City Council minutes you approved earlier, and then they went to the Trails Committee, and they have just those few more minor changes that are highlighted in yellow. So I think it would be maybe a ratification of the minutes.
Okay, to reapprove those. I looked at those changes. They all seemed like they were good, minor, but clarifying changes to make the record more accurate. So I would, I would.
So I'll motion to, to reapprove the minutes for the joint Trails and City Council meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. How about the City Council meeting minutes? Any changes there of October 18th?
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 18th City Council meeting as written.
So moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That also passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a summary action calendar, and there are three items on that. The one that needs our attention is to make sure, item B, that we, the motion includes a two-year warranty period for that Park Hills Phase 3 subdivision where they did not use the correct material.
Correct.
Any questions on the three op, three items on our summary action calendar, the assignment agreement for the PDO agreement, the Legacy Crossing Development Agreement for the Pine Hill subdivision? If not, I would look for a motion to approve all three items with the note that the item B, we need to commence a two-year warranty for the Park Hills Phase 3 subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
So moved in second. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Great. Corey, we're to item number three, a public hearing on the reception center in the IH zone. We'll first hear a staff report from our city planner, our community development director on this, and then we'll open the public hearing after this staff report and questions by the council.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor introduced, this is a request to amend the zone zoning ordinance text, in this particular case, the table of uses, and to look at your IH zone list of uses. And currently, reception centers are not allowed within the IH zone. They are allowed in some of the commercial zones, but not in the IH zone. They have interest of operating facility. They'll describe what their plans are for, but it qualifies as a reception center use. So they'd like to amend it and allow it to be a permitted use in the IH zone. They submitted that application. We presented that to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission debated it. They recognized that other places it is a permitted use, and so they ensued discussion about permitted use versus conditional use. Permitted, by reminder, is a use that, as long as you meet the basic obligations of the standards, you have a right to do that permitted use. The conditional use is similar to a permitted use, but it allows you some ability to look at impacts and require them to address how they would mitigate those impacts. And if they do mitigate those impacts, then the obligation of state law is to approve that use. The Planning Commission recognizes that their particular location is in the south neighborhood, west neighborhood area. The petition is to look at all of the IH zones, and our IH zones are west of I-15, both north and south. As they debated that, they felt like that they're, in their mind, looking at a use that has some evening activities to it, that the conditional use was the more appropriate category if you were to move forward with it. And so the Planning Commission has made that recommendation to change the table of uses for the IH zone, include reception center uses, but their modification is listed as a conditional use.
Thank you. Any questions for Corey on that brief staff report or any of the activities at the Planning Commission? Excuse me. If not, I'll ask, is the applicant here, and would the applicant like to make any presentation or any comment before, before turning that to the council for questions and eventually a public hearing?
So my name is Jaden Malin. I'm a commercial real estate broker for Newmark Grubakers. I represent Luz Estrada on the transaction, or in this, on this deal. And so the building, it's a, it was an industrial building that was converted to 100% office, so it's more of an office user going into an industrial area versus an industrial user going into an office area. So we just think it will add diversity to the city. It'll offset daytime traffic because her private events would be held during the evenings and off-business hours. And indoor recreation and entertainment use is already permitted under the IH zone, so we feel like it's not too far off. But there's, the building works perfectly for reception center. There's parking, pay parking. And, yeah, that's.
What type of events do you anticipate holding in this, in this facility? Just tell us a little bit more about, about the business that you're interested in.
So she's the owner of the property, or of the business. She holds private events, private parties. She's been in business for about eight years. She's currently located in North Salt Lake on Redwood Road and I think Center Street in a similar setting. Her neighbors are industrial users, office users. So it's, it's more of a retail-ish area, but there is industrial buildings right there. And she's just looking to expand, and we felt like this was a great site.
This is a bigger facility and.
Right.
Great. Any questions for the applicant before we turn to a public hearing?
My questions would be, how late at night would they be, and is that why we're looking at the conditional use? And the other one would be, how is alcohol involved in this reception center?
The events, from my understanding, are held from 5:00 to 1:00 p.m., 5 o'clock, and I'm not sure.
You mean 5:00 to 1:00 a.m.?
No, 5:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m., correct.
And is there any, maybe we could ask our city planner, are there any restrictions on, on reception centers that, in our city, in terms of time, timer, or use that we ought to be aware of?
What was addressed at the Planning Commission level is, in the zoning ordinance, it would be the anticipation that the conditional use would be specific to any application come in and look at their operation and decide any mitigation measures. But we do have noise ordinance in the city talking about activities after 10 o'clock and the amount of noise. And so there is a secondary ordinance in place to talk about that impact. But in the discussion with the commission, it felt like noise was one issue. Business hours of operations and activities are not necessarily restricted by the noise, so they wanted the conditional use, and that's why they chose that tool.
Can either of you speak to Robyn's question about, is an alcohol license required to serve at, at private events, or?
The alcohol service, I'm not familiar with the state's application. There's an application process, meet their criteria for the service of alcohol at a private event. And we don't have any, all we would look at, all they'd look at for us is, is their proposed business allowed in that zone. And then they have to meet the state qualifications to serve any alcohol at an event.
Anything you want to add to that? Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record, that'll help us keep track of things.
My name is Luz Estrada. And the way that works the alcohol, you have to have permit only if you're going to sell the alcohol. But as an owner, we don't sell alcohol. I mean, the customers can, they bring their own alcohol, and I provide bartender, and the bartender has the permit to handle alcohol. But as an owner, I'm not going to sell alcohol. That's, that's, I'm in the North Salt Lake City, tell me about the alcohol.
So you won't be selling it, but people will be bringing it in?
They can bring their own, but it has to be limited. It's not like, you know, because they're only private parties. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? If not, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And are there any members of the public who would like to speak on the proposed zoning code amendment to add reception center in the IH zone as a conditional use? Anyone who would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it to the council for consideration. And action.
My thought is that this is very closely tied to an already permitted use indoor recreation and entertainment, and I think the mix of uses and flexibility down in that area is a good thing. And so I would be in favor of that change, but do agree with the, with the commission that it should be a conditional use.
Any other comments concerns?
So if it's a conditional use, does that mean that we can put the hours on it and things like that?
Corey, do you want to speak to that?
The issues of hours of operation are subject to review. The issue would be, is, given a particular application, do the hours of operation create a specific impact that needs to be mitigated? So you wouldn't be able to just call out, this is the only time you get to operate. They would look at it if it is, let's say, a 3:00 a.m. timeframe that they would host up to. The Planning Commission would have to identify, what does a 3:00 a.m. impact create, and is there a way to mitigate that? And that can include measures of security on their part as an operational, or it also could be 3:00 a.m. can't be mitigated, but 1:00 a.m. could. That's oversimplification, but I'm, I'm trying to show.
And at that, at that point, it would be the commission who could question the police chief if he had concerns, things like that.
Correct. And then would it be evidentiary to determine if that particular issue, time creates a need for mitigation?
It would seem to be a non-issue in that neighborhood to me. I don't, I don't even, I'm not even sure I understand why we want to make it a conditional use. Looks to me like it's, it's a, I mean, it's a, it's a use that won't bother anybody 90% of the time.
That is certainly a position that was evaluated by the commission. I can't speak for individuals, but my impression of the discussion is that you did, you do have the mixed-sector residential uses right there in the immediate area as well as west Bountiful. And so they were concerned about that.
Am I misunderstanding where we are?
No.
Well, the IH zone covers two areas.
That's the specific site, but we're then making this change for the entire IH.
Yeah. And part of the IH area district is in between two residential areas. And they, they wanted to have that extra. In this case, I know we talk about conditional uses, should we have them, should we not? In this case, they felt like, yeah, this gives us the additional tool.
So I'd make a motion that we approve ordinance number 20, then we can discuss further. 201633, amending section 12 dot 36 dot 030 of the Centerville zoning code regarding table of uses for public and civic uses to allow reception center as a conditional use in the industrial high zone.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved in second. Further discussion? Questions for applicant or for staff?
My immediate concern is that anytime we add use in an area where we don't already have use, and at an hour we don't have use, we increase the need for security, and our police officers are already tapped pretty severely. That is an area that has had, I mean, industrial in general is one that they do go through pretty regularly, but having people there and knowing that there are people there during the nighttime makes, will make a difference in the way that they have to patrol, where they're used to right now looking for anyone who's out of place because they know there shouldn't be people there. I think that, that puts a lot of pressure on our police department that's already under a lot of pressure. So I am hesitant on that. I'd like to see some more information before I.
Yeah. I don't disagree with that concern. I had the same thought, but then I think there's also the flip side of it, that introducing activity at a time where it's usually vacant might. might actually do the, have the opposite effect.
It's possible.
Any other further discussion? We have a motion on the table. If there's not any further discussion, let's vote on this.
I was just gonna say, I, we can vote on, if not, if it doesn't go, I'd really like to hear from the police chief and feel how he, how he feels this would affect it down there.
Well, I think the conditional use permit process is probably gonna allow the chief the input that he needs, but I share the same concern, is, is that the availability of police officers for those late shifts and the, you know, anytime you get a group together, ninety-nine percent of the time they're fine, but when they're the one percent they're not, you know, what do you do? And, and so that is gonna be a burden for the police chief to, to take a look at, but I, I, I'm not opposed to a, a conditional use permit process.
We, we did just, anytime there's alcohol allowed, there is an increased need for police coverage. And we did just have our DUI roadblock, well, not roadblock, but checkpoint this past weekend. And we do have issues with that in Centerville. And it, it, it does tap our police force. And when there is one occasion, that does tie up two officers for multiple hours. So I think, I think we really need to look at what that's doing to our police force. And I'm not, I'm not willing to vote in favor of that and push that to the planning commission and say, planning commission decided it's mitigated. I think that as a city council, we have a desire, a responsibility to our police department to make sure that they are okay before we approve things and say, somebody else take care of it and make sure it's covered.
So to clarify, Corey, this is a permitted use in other commercial zones. It's only the industrial zone where it's not a permitted use already, so the...
Corey, I have another question. How do you feel that the hours of operation and the potential for alcohol being served differs from the fact that we already have indoor recreation and entertainment? Could entertainment be defined as throwing concerts in a building, nighttime concerts where alcohol served, things like that? So that's part of my feeling is that we already have a potential for similar kind of activities and uses.
Yeah, if you have a private event and they bring their alcohol, there is those state regulatory, regulatory issues. And then the person serving the alcohol has to have a certification for that. Now, that's, that doesn't necessarily negate that there isn't a potential problem, you know, that occurs on a, on a, from a time-to-time basis when you mix that kind of activity together, but...
But it's already allowed in commercial areas and this very similar use is already allowed in industrial high, so.
So Corey, to deal with Stephanie's question and concern, is Chief Child aware of this situation? Do you know?
Um, no, we didn't ask input from him specifically on it. So if you so choose to, to look at the need for manpower and so forth as you introduce that, I think that's a viable question. From me, from my standpoint, I, I don't, we have some entertainment center already in that area, the police have been called to the pass to it. I'm aware of incidents. But I think you'll find that the manpower and shift is available. I do agree with the issue of the intensity of the call can delay some time. I think that, you know, you, you make the great point, you know, is this something that we want to address before we allow it? Or is this something we allow the conditional use? For me, you'll, you'll likely, I'm not gonna promise it, but you'll likely, the manpower is there for this particular use list. I think the greater control is, is there hours of operation engaging the discussion with the police chief? And if he has, for some reason, there's no coverage from X to Y, how can that be mitigated? It's either you can't operate because there's no coverage from X to Y, or there's a limited amount of coverage and they have to provide their own security.
Actually contradicting what, what you kind of thought, because of activity this weekend, I had interaction with the police department on Saturday morning, who was bemoaning their inability to have multiple officer coverage frequently at night.
Yeah, I, I don't want to downplay it. I mean, this is a constant debate because you're gonna always have the, the police department say they're under staff. So I don't know when you'll get to the empirical evidence, and I'm not trying to cut on the chief, but you got some valid things, but you, you know, they're, they're always looking, coverage, shift, so forth. You know, if you did that kind of decision, you know, Walmart wouldn't be here. And I'm not trying to be facetious, it just wouldn't be here because it, it has a high rate. And so you do have that...
And then where would our police officers' job security be?
Yeah. So you have to kind of decide that balance between the legislative decision of introducing the uses, so I think that's a debatable point. And do you want, do that to feel a comfort level? I suspect that you'll hear, I'm always short-staffed, but yes, I can provide coverage. Now it's back to hours of operation, conditional use, what are their activities? Engaging the discussion with the chief on those timeframes? And, and the, the conditional use is always subject to recall by the planning commission if a condition is not covering a mitigation measure. So I think, I think it's just you have to decide where a comfort level is to the call of that security issue.
So if it goes to conditional use, then it's the planning commission's sole...
Chief, you are awesome!
Yeah, there you go. He heard me!
Wow!
We, we were talking about you and you just showed up. It's, it's, the response time is incredible.
Chief, not, not, not to put you on the spot...
May I, may I comment about Corey's comment first? And that may give a little bit of an intro to the chief while he thinks about it?
Yes, you may.
So Corey, I, I realize that this particular use may not, may not necessitate additional police coverage just by itself, but I'm keenly aware of the fact that we also have a new apartment complex that's going up, and that's going to also require police presence from time to time potentially. I think we're being very short-sighted if we're bringing in lots of things at once that will all occasionally require police presence because our police officers are already strapped. And, and I can say that with confidence because I've ridden with every one of them.
So Chief, we were just discussing, the planning commission provided a recommendation to approve the use of a reception center in the industrial high zone, which is on the other, on the west side of the freeway. It's already allowed use in the commercial zones. And the council had questions, is this allowing that use in a commercial high, or industrial high zone, will that put additional burden on the police department that they should consider?
Maybe you can help me understand exactly what the reception center would, would be used for, what type of traffic would be coming and going?
Private events from five PM to one AM, potential for alcohol to be served by a certified bartender.
But not sold.
Served but not sold.
Oh, served but not sold, okay, sure, okay.
My, my initial concern, Chief, is that that is an area that's been patrolled regularly, the industrial area, and to tell an officer, patrol this and while you're looking for, there shouldn't be anybody here, by the way, there are gonna be a whole bunch of people over here. I think that adds additional burden to the, to the officers in addition to the occasional incidents that will tie up multiple officers if there's a DUI issue.
Yeah. Of course, it all depends on how much alcohol and you're, it's a certified bartender. The alcohol service is, I guess, something that, that needs to be considered. If it's done responsibly with someone who knows the law and is, is abiding by the law to adults and not, you know, in excess, that, the alcohol aspect of it can be problematic, obviously, if it gets to be too much, because that's gonna normally result in behavior that oftentimes we respond to. If the alcohol is being reserved, served in a responsible manner and, you know, by to, to adults, then that is, in and of itself, is not a problem, as long as it's responsibly served. The, I'm not too concerned about having traffic down there per se in the area. We, we already do experience traffic down there already, people coming and going for businesses that are operating all the time. I, I would think that the, the impact, just based on what I heard in the last five minutes as far as what the, the use would be, you know, depending on how many people are coming and going, probably not that big of an impact on us, I would, I would estimate.
The other thing that we've talked about is the fact that this same use is already allowed in the commercial districts. So the question is, is it overly burdensome to also allow it in the industrial? And also in the industrial area, the indoor recreation and entertainment uses are allowed? So we could already have situations where a private bartender's coming in, things like that, so...
Right. Yeah.
So do you see the potential for this, this new use in the industrial area in general becoming overly burdensome?
Well, as Councilwoman Ivey pointed out, the combination of everything that's happening is having impact. This, this would be a, a small piece of the puzzle, would be another thing that's added down there. Isolating it by itself, the impact of that by itself probably isn't that much, but it is being added upon, you know, line by line, everything else that's going on down there. It's, it's, it's another piece of a puzzle that's going in that creates more traffic flow, more potential for issues, but by itself, on its own, you know, probably not, not a too big of an impact.
We would have the officers between five and one AM on, enough on duty to be able to handle that?
Between five and one AM, yeah, yes, we, we should.
Do you feel like, I mean, before you can kind of give us this recommendation, would you rather have more time to get more information or do you feel kind of comfortable with what you're giving us?
Given that you've been given five minutes to consider the entire thing.
Yeah, information is al, always helpful. I mean, if I had an idea of the, the quantity of people that would be coming, we could expect on any given night, it probably would assume probably weekends would be a higher traffic flow going on.
If I may, because we only had now five and a half.
Okay, five and a half. Keep, keep stalling.
Yeah, the, the proposal from our standpoint, if it went forward, is it would be a conditional use permit. And it'd be subject to your review because we don't know if somebody would come in with a facility of twenty-five or a facility of a hundred and fifty. And so we would, by the business, require them to submit for conditional use permit, look at their hours of operation, look at their certification, look at how many people, and that would all, you would be in that loop with the commission to decide what mitigation measures would need to be in place. I think what the council's looking for is, if we do open this, does this land, land a significant, maybe not the right word, but an issue where you would say, this puts it to a place that I probably not going to be able to deal with it because it opens up more than what I have staff to do?
No, I, I, I think that we can handle the additional traffic based on, you know, the particulars of it, but I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't create any alarm bells for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So we have a motion on the table to follow the planning commission's recommendation and approve the proposed zoning code amendment to allow a reception center as a conditional use in the industrial high zone, amending the proper section and passing ordinance twenty sixteen thirty-three. So let's start the voting with Bill.
Aye.
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 Nay.
Aye.
That passes four to one. Thank you very much. We, we look forward to having a vacant building in our business park filled. And, and we welcome, if you get, as you get through the conditional use process, if you get through that, we, we welcome you to our city. Next up is item number four, climate-controlled storage, which is also a, a hearing and a zoning code amendment change. So again, we'll hear a staff report from our community development director, Corey Schneider, and then the applicant is also here, we'll hear from, from him as well before we go to the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, again, this is a request to look at text amendments. In this particular case, we received a petition to amend the conduct, the, can it all mess up, commercial high zone and allow a climate-controlled storage use. So this would be different than the outdoor roll-up storage units you generally see on the west side of in our industrial area. This would be indoor facilities, semi-small bays and so forth, climate-controlled, and people could rent those spaces. And the petitioner will explain to you the merits of, of why they've made this request for climate control, control storage in the commercial high. We took that to the planning commission and talked about the matter for the consideration. Storage uses are always generally sensitive, particularly if they're outdoor. And then if you have the, the typical, what we know, roll-up door type of storage, the security measures, people's possessions, storage units had a bad name in the past, I think is general, they're, they're improving their product over the time, but, but that's what you see typical. Where you see climate-controlled storage, it's a, it's kind of, not a new phenomenon, but new probably to, to Utah, where you have people with a large amount of files or materials that can't sit and seep in the damp, dark spaces of a traditional storage and want some type of climate-controlled. Climate control varies from simplistic, just covered area and temperature-controlled, to very specific vaults and electronics in that there is very specific heating and air conditioning and so forth to control it. And so that they can, they can vary. So we came up, did a discussion with them, talking about the principle of how you define that and coming up with a definition. And then the debate led on to, we can agree to somewhat of a definition, where should it be, should the CH zone? And so I'm gonna try to describe to you, because it's a little bit of an off-way of, of handling the matter. The discussion was, is if we just open it to the CH zone, then all CH zones are allowed climate-controlled. And if I recall right, the minute should reflect that there was some sentiment to say there's probably going to be an increased demand of climate control. We have Salt Lake, I guess there's a facility in Leighton that's opened up. And I think the commission's concern was, well, we have a large CH area at Page's Lane, and I'm not sure that that's what we want the conversion and transition process to be in that CH zone. So they began to struggle on the broadness versus the narrowness. They had an affinity, for lack of better terms, to the petitioner for the parish square. And his explanations of why he's, thinks it's a viable use in the parish square. And so they asked staff to go back and look at several ways of trying to address it, all from allowing it to CH zone to even creating a specific zone just for the parish square area. And, and that was a pretty unique request by them. What we capitalized, and they asked to, to look at the overlay. So we found, if, if we're going to do this, the overlay zone already exists over the parish square area. It's called the Main Street, South Main Street corridor. So we got the three corners, parish square being the large corner and the two south corners at Main and Parish is, is the North Gateway District. And we already have the base zoning of the CH and the CM zones, there's a couple of varying zones there, in place, and then we add those additional uses that the corridor plan allows you to have above and beyond the CH or the CM zone. And they said, yeah, that's, that's something we're interested in, in creating it. So the discussion became is, is parish square really a significant component to the North Gateway District in that south corridor plan? And the decision of the planning commission in general was, is parish square is probably going to be a long, long horizon. There's breathed new life into it, it's probably gonna be many years before it transitions to the quote gateway concept, moving the buildings, putting up front, putting the parking behind. And they said, you know, we think that should be parsed out, how can we do that? And so we picked the overlay concept. So here's, here's the gist of it, and this is the commission's modification. His request was the CH zone. They're saying, okay, parish square is CH, we're okay in the parish square area, let's use this South Main Street corridor plan, use the North Gateway District area of it, subtract parish square from the mixed-use concepts. So now the densities and moving the buildings up front and putting the parking behind, parish square under this proposed language would be exempted from that, which leaves now the two south corners.
You would take it out of the South Main Street corridor plan completely?
No, it would remain in the south corridor plan because we want to use the overlay to add a use. It's just simply saying parish square, you don't have to abide by the new design standards of the South Main Street. You're an exempted area, and here is your, your CH, you're still in the parish lane gateway area, you still have the CH uses, conditional and permitted, and since you're in the overlay, we'll add one more use, climate-controlled storage.
Can you speak to the parish lane gateway design standards? Were they, was this already, were they already applicable? Or is this an addition?
They're, they're applicable... There are, they're, they're applicable. You have the overlay that trumps the parish lane area. But your parish lane design guidelines run from Main Street to Legacy. That entire corridor is in the gateway standards. Parish square has the overlay that lays on top, takes them out of that, and moves them into the corridor plan. This one's now returning them to the parish lane gateway area with its CH zone, but still in the overlay, so we can add the climate controlled storage just to that location.
Okay, but, but how is?
Clear as mud.
But how is this not spot zoning then? If you're saying, in, in the Main Street overlay, we want to be able to add, only in the Main Street overlay, the CH use of climate controlled, but then that doesn't mean that it's added over in the south district?
Correct.
And, which is CH, and so someone can then apply for that tomorrow?
You're using the overlay, like you add the density uses? You're using the overlay to add the climate control just to parish square. And that's something we debated, uh, early on, is they wanted to discuss different options. Staff said, the more narrow you get, the less comfortable we're with how narrow it gets. Planning commission said, staff, we don't care, write it anyway. So we wrote it with the overlay, and, uh, it's, it's, it's a twist of, of giving the CH use for the parish square an option for climate controlled storage, but other CH areas don't have it. So the consequence to you, for me, the, the serious consequence, and that's a relative word, the serious consequence is, is this area is being specifically exempted from all those form-based codes and just returning it to CH with an added use because of the overlay.
Thank you for that update. Any questions for Corey before we hear from the applicant?
So now, a year from now, or two years from now, or whatever it is, when the clinic has closed and moved to Farmington and left us with an empty building, somebody wants to put one in there.
They're not in the CH parish area.
Tell me how we defend to them the bias that we can put it in on parish lane, but you can't put it in there.
That's CM, so it's just totally a different beast.
Oh, it's not.
But, but the more comparable argument would be over here at the old Dick's Market on the south side, which is CH. Absolutely.
And this is the legislative process.
So, Steve, do you have something to say before we hear from the applicant?
Seeking some clarification then, Corey. So you're saying the parish square area would remain in the South Main Street corridor plan?
As an exempted area of the form-based code.
Okay, just exempted from the form-based.
So that you can add in the use. So the, the, Bill makes, Bill, Councilman Intz, you make a great point, how do we justify it? Uh, I think that's the legislative decision. The other thing that I think you have to think about if you want to look long range, just, I'm throwing it out so you have a full understanding. If for some reason you adopt this, climate controlled storage is entered and, and developed under the overlay, the overlay gets removed, guess what happens to the climate controlled storage? It gets removed and it becomes now a non-conforming use, just so you know the big picture.
But it was previously approved.
Gets to stay as long as they don't make changes.
So, so the thing I might note that's in here is, is the planning commission and staff wrote this so that there is a, a limit. It's not to exceed 10,000 square feet.
Correct, thanks, Mayor.
Within the, within the parish square.
Yeah, the CH zone is a zone that allows 10,000 to 50,000 square feet. And obviously 50,000 square feet at the parish square area wouldn't work, and so they felt like the 10,000 was the cap.
Well. Go ahead, Bill.
Well, I like where we end up, okay, and support it. I guess I would express concern that this is the kind of an action that as we talk to residents and citizens, they hate, because we're talking out of both sides of our mouth. And so I, I'm not saying that I'm going to vote against it, I'm not expressing displeasure about this proposal. I think anything we can do, I mean, it sounds like this is a very positive development for space that's been having a hard time. Um, or at least that's my perception, watching the things that have happened. But at the end of the day, this is the kind of thing that causes a lot of complaint and concern amongst our citizens.
Yeah, I, we.
And I express that concern.
And I, and I've had, I mean, I can't say the depth of consideration at the commission level, but staff raised, you know, the broad issue of fairness to all districts having the same number of uses and opportunities versus narrowing it. We raised that issue at the commission level, I, I think sufficiently, that the commission looked at staff and said, thank you very much, craft it this way anyway. So we did.
So at this point, I'd like to, uh, invite the applicant to, to speak to you and, uh, provide any presentation that, that he would like, and then, uh, open time for questions.
Thank you, Mayor. And Corey, thank you, and thanks for spending as much time as you have on this, I appreciate it. We recognize that this is unique, and the challenge is, I think, that you're, you know, Commissioner, Councilman Intz, I understand your feelings about this, and we've thought about this. I've been a resident, by the way, Steve Tate is my name. I've been a resident of Centerville for 18 years until about four months ago, and now we're on the very south end of Farmington, so we still.
Shame on you.
I'm sorry. You know, but owning that shopping center there, and being a resident of the city for as long as we have, we've got considerable, uh, we, we care about the community, and I understand that if, uh, if you grant that, uh, you know, this, this request on this property, that that could bring up some questions particularly about Page's Lane. You know, I'm a commercial real estate broker, developer, we developed in communities all along the Wasatch Front. And, uh, you know, that, the Page's Lane area has some issues there, and I, you know, um, Commissioner Daley brought up a lot of questions about the multifamily aspects of that project, and the hope for some sort, you know, something that could regenerate that area. You know, retail will be very challenging in, in that area. And I think that, uh, that's why they, the, the planning commission spent so much time considering this issue so that we don't end up in a, in a conflict. Climate controlled storage, I'll tell you, we've developed for over 20 years. You, you couldn't have paid me enough money to, to put climate controlled storage in a shopping center until about five years ago. It was never something that we desired in a retail project, we didn't want it. It doesn't, it, and it, there's a few reasons for that. Number one, it doesn't really bring shoppers into a project. We want retailers that can kind of work from one space to another. And if you look at parish square with the re-tenanting, and we bought that about three years ago, and it had been neglected, I think, for a long time, and so we went to, to work to try to re-tenant it and put uses in there that would work well together. So, you know, there, there are traditional uses that work, uh, where they cross shop, and, and that has been our attempt, is to try and do that. The problem with parish square is that the, uh, when it was developed in the late seventies, they built it wrong. You don't build U-shaped shops, you just can't do it, because you end up with these corners that we affectionately refer to as armpits, because they stink. You, you end up with these armpits in shopping centers that are almost impossible to lease. And until CrossFit was in that space in the corner right by where we relocated Empire, that sat vacant for almost 15 years. And that is not good for the city, it's not good for the community, and those poor residents behind end up with a big vacant box that is just perpetual. So, it, one other element that we found out with U-shaped shops is that you end up with a parking jam that sits right in the middle, because there's not very, a very good way to exit. And when you have a karate studio and a CrossFit gym and a dance studio, I mean, it's just, it gets kind of crazy in there. So, um, we weren't all that disappointed that the karate studio went to the west side of Centerville, and we weren't that, all that disappointed that CrossFit left, because what it did is that it gave us an opportunity to kind of resolve a parking issue, and again, re-tenant to traditional retail uses. That space, unfortunately, is 4,185 square feet, with 36 total inches of frontage. In the very corner of a shopping center, where the only permanent residents are a couple of sparrows that like to build nests above it. And so, we, we really put ourselves in a position where it's tough to lease. So who's going to lease that? Who's going to take 4,200 square feet in a corner with 36 inches? I've been doing commercial retail brokerage for, like I say, about 20, over 20 years, and we have taken it to everybody. You know, we've looked at, um, urgent care centers, we've looked at other stu-, you know, dance or karate or that type of use, and we haven't been able to find somebody that would take that space. And so as I've gone around and talked to my colleagues in the industry, every single one of my colleagues has said, small modular climate controlled storage, you have a dock on the back and an exterior door, it's lighted back there. So let's just, you know, make it appear that that space is connected with either AutoZone or the new hair salon that we just put in, and have all of the activity come through the back. We have a man door there, we can put an overlock system with a key card access or a punch code. And then we build small spaces inside that are maybe five by five, up to about a five by 10 size, so that people can store, you know, t- temperature-sensitive materials, whether it's technology-based materials or documents, or items like that. A lot of our existing tenants in the shopping center have expressed interest to store some of their product there, because we can offer it at a significantly lower rent rate than they traditionally pay in, pay in the retail spaces. So, um, y- you're starting to see climate controlled storage that is popping up in retail zones. On 33rd South in Salt Lake City, just off of about 9th East, there's one called Cubex, and it's actually a really big two-story or three-story facility. It's very professionally built, um, and it leases fairly well. The former Bucus Kmart building in Farmington has recently gone to interior self-storage, operated by, um, uh, Extra Space, which is a, a REIT out of, um, Salt Lake. So we're starting to see some transition this way, and I would suggest that with the, our millennials and the way that they're kind of, they're fundamentally changing shopping habits and, and structure in our communities, that kind of convenience is becoming more and more requested, especially in more urban markets. Which as much as we don't like at Centerville, because we're kind of between Ogden and, and, uh, Salt Lake, we've seen the influx of some multifamily product in our market, in our community. And I think it provides an option for people to store product without going into a dusty, storaging it on the west side of town and driving through the gate and, um, you know, going through that experience, where they can come in and it's clean, it's climate controlled, and it provides a convenience where, you know, maybe they don't have a lot of rooms, so they can put their Christmas tree and their decorations in the summer, they can keep them there. And then in the wintertime, they just transition their, their product, um, that they would, they would store there. Uh, candidly, this is not going to be very profitable for us. But with our experience on watching that space sit vacant, it kind of Band-Aids a vacancy and it eliminates. No, not at all, that just costs us every month. But, but I think that this way, it does solve that issue for us, which, that, I mean, that's in our interest. But I think from the interest of the shopping center generally and for the community, it provides a service that I believe is, is needed. And number two, I think that it, it solves a parking issue for us, and, and makes things more convenient, uh, for, for the population.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Tate?
Possibly after we hear from the public.
Great. Now, we'll reserve the right to ask you those. Uh, if, if there's nothing else, I'll go ahead and open this, uh, this is scheduled for a public hearing. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on the zoning code amendment to allow climate controlled storage, uh, in the parish lane, uh, shopping center? Seeing none, I, I will, uh, close the public hearing and turn it to the council for questions and, and, or action on this.
Well, to your point, Bill, about, uh, preferential treatment or spot zoning, as Tammy put it out, I'm going to have to go with Corey, this is, this is why we get the legislative hat. And from my perspective, I don't see a downside to this. And if somebody were to approach us in six months or a year and say, I really want to do something over the old Dick's property, I would be, let's talk, because that's a positive, it's not, it's not a negative to me, so. I'd actually motion that we, uh, approve ordinance 201632, climate controlled storage, as authored.
Second.
So move to second, that we approve ordinance 201632, which would allow, uh, climate controlled storage in, uh, certain areas. Further discussion on this? Any other questions?
I have some points that I've made note of. The planning commission specifically said that they don't feel comfortable with allowing this use in commercial high in general, and I agree with that, and so, in my opinion, that's the answer. This is a lot of gymnastics, a lot of gymnastics to get it into one area. And as much as I want to see all of our retail spots full, absolutely. It's just, this is about the process and respecting the process, um, more than about the end result. George just made a point in our work session that it's not our job to make sure a space or a business or a developer or a real estate agent is successful and is able to make a certain amount of money. It's our job to be as consistent as we can with the principles behind the, the zoning that we do and allow. Also, to add this into the South Main Street corridor, if the planning commission doesn't even feel comfortable putting it into commercial high in general, it makes me all the more uncomfortable to add it into the South Main Street corridor under any circumstances, because the point of that corridor is that it gets closer and closer to residential. And we've heard so much through the discussion of our South Main Street corridor that we want to be a high-quality place that respects residential. And, and, uh, storage use has traditionally been more of an industrial use. And we just had a conversation about, should we allow something that's been traditionally allowed in commercial to go into industrial? Well, I feel much more comfortable with that than letting something more industrial creep into commercial, especially as you get more and more east and closer to our, um, residential neighborhoods. So I definitely do feel that with all the gymnastics involved, this would be considered spot zoning in my mind.
I, I will note that the planning commission did pass this on unanimously, 6-0, and, uh, I, I respect that it's a somewhat of an experiment. Do we, let, let, let's do this in a limited way and, and see if it's something that we.
Well, as much as we've been diverging from planning commission recommendations, I'd like to give them a win, one where we're in agreement with them, at least from my perspective.
So we have a motion and a second on the table. Further questions or discussion?
Having, uh, enjoyed the use of climate controlled storage in the past and, and seeing how that is, how that can be monitored and, and handled, I don't have a problem with it coming into a shopping area.
If there are no more discussion, let's, uh, vote on the motion, which is to approve, uh, climate controlled, climate controlled storage and, and the associated zoning code amendments, uh, in 124880, the South Main Street corridor overlay zone, and, uh, ordinance 201632. Start the voting with, uh, George.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
That passes also four to one. So, we, we look forward to having that space filled. Uh, at this point, council, I, the next item on our agenda was the, um, to talk about industrial, very high zoning. I would suggest, given you've got a number of members of the, the public here, that we, uh, table that or, or first take items six or, or item number seven, which I think we have a number of citizens, uh, here, and we've also got our police chief here.
Six, seven, uh, eight, eight and nine.
Sorry, six or eight, I got the wrong.
Yeah, six and eight, I think.
Six and eight, I, I'd like to not keep people waiting, uh, too, too late.
I think we have, I think we also have some here for, um.
Uh, number nine.
Number, uh, seven and nine as well. So, you sure you don't want to just postpone this?
So I'm moving five down to ten.
You want to table this to another meeting?
I want, I want to table, I, I'd suggest we table number five.
To another meeting?
You can table it to another meeting, or, or, or we can do it later in the, in the evening.
I, I'm, I'm going to motion to table it, uh, there's not a huge rush to, to do that activity, so I'm going to motion we table item five.
To another meeting?
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously, great. So let's, uh, take our item that was scheduled for eight o'clock, citizen presentation on our general plan. And we'll invite, uh, Heather and, and Marty Money to provide a quick, uh, 10-minute presentation that they requested. And then I'd, uh, also suggest we, we talk about number eight after this.
Thank you, we might make bedtime this way, thank you. Thank you for the time, uh, your time and what you do as the city council, we appreciate it. Thank you for putting up our, our slides. This will be fairly brief, but we feel like there are some things that have been said. Taking a quote from Mr. Snyder from the work session, he said that high density seems to be a straight jacket. to be a straitjacket that has been burdening the community lately. And I don't know if that's the truth. I just know that that's the term we have to use for something that we are observing as citizens. And so, with that, if we can proceed to the slide, this is from the general plan. It says, "The citizens of Centerville desire to achieve a quality of life that is consistent with the development of low-density residential development." Case in point, we have climate-controlled storage that is, you know, addressing the needs of multifamily, multi-unit development, and I see that as a setting a trend, an indicator that we are moving in a direction that is away from this general plan statement. And so, as a community, we're confused. Heather and I began just our small efforts of grassroots advocacy due to the Hofoca property that is now the Porter Walton Townhomes that are on Porter Lane. We've reluctantly dragged ourselves out to many a public meeting to address some of the concerns that are ongoing, and until we see resolution of this, we feel like we're going to have to continue to say something, so that is why we are here. Here are some things we would like to go over, and Heather will take this.
So, I did a little driving around town a couple of weeks ago. I told my six-year-old we were going on a detective trip, and we started counting the number of mailboxes, really, is how we counted between, we started at Parish and went to Pages, but as we looked further and really looked at Chase Lane as more the center part of town, there are an estimated 1,400 units of multi-unit housing currently developed in Centerville, and approximately 1,100 of those units are located south from Chase Lane to Pages Lane and east from the Frontage Road to 400 East. So, where's the density in North Centerville? North of Chase Lane? We found a couple of places, but the Lion Share is in the south end of town. If you want to go to the next slide, we put, we included the zoning map, which I know you're all familiar with, but it just really gives an indication, if you look at the colors, where the density is in Centerville. And it also, this map also shows to me the limited corridor, the limited size of our city. There's really not a lot of expanding that we can do unless you go up. So, if you can see where the residential high and residential medium is in that orange and yellow, it's pretty concentrated in one area. We have in our general plan statements, if you'll want to go to the next slide, just the residential development policies state that residential development in Centerville is primarily low-density, single-family. You can see here, this identifies the dwelling units per acre in the low, medium, and high zones. And if we can just touch on the conditional use permit, we really learned something in the Hofoca development, that the CUP is a developer's tool. It really lets a developer get the maximum use out of that property with really not giving the city a whole lot of control. As long as the developer can mitigate those concerns, then we can't stop it. And so, we see eight units per acre in a medium-density zone, which is a lot of houses. Drive down and see what's going on. It's a lot of people in a small space. And when, and then our statement number two goes on to say, "Medium or high-density residential development that is allowed in appropriate locations within the city should provide usable open spaces, landscaping, and other associated amenities which will assure consistency with the residential quality desired in Centerville." How can you have usable open space when you have 12 units on an acre? There's no room. There's no room for it. We cut and pasted from the general plan different parts of the neighborhoods. So, this slide shows you different, all the different parts of the neighborhoods that are outlined in the plan, and all the highlight, underlined statements there talk about medium or low residential. So, it's in every neighborhood. That's what's desired. This was just to give you kind of a, and I'm sure you're familiar with it, but when you really put it all together, there's very, there's only like two places where high residential is even mentioned. I wanted to just say that this really iterates from a citizen's perspective. The general plan is our contract with the city of Centerville. This is what we know. And we continue to be confused as a community because we see violations of the contract. Each time a request for a change of zoning is made, it calls into question the guidelines that we have. What's the purpose of having a contract or a zoning code if the contract's able to be negotiated for every project? Why can't our staff say, "Thanks for your application, but this isn't in line with our general plan. You'll need to rework your proposal to fit within the contract," which is what happened with the Balling project, and that was just really great to see. So, Marty's gonna conclude.
Thank you. So, why then does residential high density continue to be part of our general plan? Because we're confused. We're scratching our heads. So, it's time for a change. We are seeing that Centerville is a small community within a limited, narrow corridor. It will never be everything to everyone, even if we built out to the edges of the universe and up to the sky, we would not address the growth that's going on in the Wasatch Front. We see the reports. We read the paper. We know that there is a tremendous amount of growth going on, especially in the next 30 years in our area. However, our community is weary by the never-ending battle against the high-density fight. We want to discourage some of the concerns that we have if we put a very, very high amount of residents on the Old Dix Market property, for example. There would be an extreme amount of strain on Taylor Elementary, and that's real life. We have concerns with all sorts of social issues. Quality of life is hard to measure, so that's why it's hard to bring to you hard numbers that are hard and fast. It probably seems a little crazy to think that we could come up with some kind of suggestion that would say, "This type of zoning that we've done in the past doesn't belong here. We're just a couple of citizens who have made a very concerted effort." And we have a lot of support that has come to us over time, and, you know, what we're hearing and from a citizen's perspective is that it's time for a change. So, therefore, we simply recommend that high-density residential be eliminated from the general plan. And that if it needs to be a specific, is going through every single neighborhood and say, where Heather had it underlined, low to medium density is desirable in this neighborhood, then get specific, please, and say, "And high-density shall not be allowed." Because we're seeing a ton of wiggle room every time a developer comes through with some kind of plan that goes against the neighborhood. That's why we, as citizens, continue to be confused, continue to raise a voice, and say, "This is not part of the contract. The general plan isn't speaking for what it's supposed to do." So, number two on there, the city council shall, please, strengthen the language of the general plan, the zoning amendments, all of it, the whole enchilada, please. Let's do something stronger so that we can indeed keep and maintain the quality of life that we're enjoying in Centerville. And as we like to say, developers come and go, but housing stays for generations, so let's own Centerville right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marty and Heather, for that presentation.
Thank you very much.
You put a lot of present, preparation into that. All right. We, next on our agenda is to discuss the Davis County Natural Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan. This was scheduled for lengthy discussion, but if the council is okay with this-
I'm amenable to heading to item eight.
I suggest we have a short discussion on Jennings Lane 400 West intersection and then have a more lengthy discussion on the mitigation plan.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Paul Child, the chief of police for Centerville City. My thought maybe Randy Randall would be here as well, the Public Works Director, but I'll basically go over the situation here at this intersection. So, we'll be talking about Jennings Lane, which is 1,700 north, the intersection of Jennings Lane and 400 West on the north side of, or the north portion of Centerville. This intersection is where two collector roadways meet. It's not a lot of traffic when you compare it to maybe other places, but it is a collector. We did, I did a traffic survey there measuring traffic conditions in that intersection over an eight-week period, putting tubes out there and counting cars on each leg of that intersection. I put tubes out there two weeks for each leg, and the totals came up on average of about 1,100 vehicles per leg, so it was very, very close. The intersection is matched almost with less than 100 cars a day, a similar traffic that's going through that intersection.
Less than 100 car difference is what you're saying, between the legs, right?
Between the legs, yes. So, just north of this intersection is 2025 North, and on, towards Main Street going east on 2025 North is Reading Elementary School. So, this intersection right here is actually part of what's called the SNAP plan. So, that's basically a routing plan for children to safely go to school. Because it is collectors both Fourth West and Jennings are collector roads, they're wider and they're designed to, you know, to move traffic from point A to point B. Jennings is obviously a shorter road. It goes from Main Street down to the Frontage Road and was built extra wide. When it was built, it was actually built to have a higher traffic flow going through there. The geometry of this intersection is very poor. We, as, when I was assistant chief and lieutenant, Chief Worsley, and I went over and looked at this a few times with the street department, it was concerning to us then, and we tried to do some things to maybe make it a little safer. Last, oh, around May or so, I started getting more feedback, more complaints about this intersection and the dangerous aspects of it. The concern has to do with children crossing Jennings Lane. It also has to do with the near crashes that have happened there and also crashes that have happened there. We actually don't have a real high number of crashes. Since 2009, we've had six reported crashes. Three of those have been injury accidents. One was auto pedestrian. But in the feedback that I've been getting from the citizens through Facebook and emails since we started working on this, is that there have been additional crashes that we have not been told about, and there's a lot of near miss or near crashes that are not being reported. In fact, Randy Randall said that when he was out there evaluating it last week, he was nearly struck as he went through the intersection. So, the, there's a high degree, I would characterize it as a fairly high degree of concern among the residents that live along Jennings Lane and Fourth West for the safety of this intersection, the hazard that it creates. One of the problems, on this photograph, it's really, you can't really tell, but if you were to zoom out-
We have a, we have one that we can put up there.
Okay. It's more of a sweeping roadway that has a curve to it, and so there's some real issues with sight distance. If you're approaching that intersection from the north side going southbound, so the way we're oriented here, okay, now I can get a rear, okay, so-
We have two of these, one on the west side, one on the east. Which side do you want?
That one works good for right now. So, the top of that photograph would be north, the left side would be west, and I think you can figure it out from there. So, if you're coming from the north on 400 West and you're going southbound and you come into that intersection, it's controlled by stop signs for north and southbound traffic. If you can notice there, and the previous picture was more distinct, but the way that the crosswalks are painted and where the pedestrian access is to the roadway is quite a ways north of the intersection, and you can see the stop line at the top of that picture up there for southbound traffic is quite a ways back from the intersection. If you're looking to the west from that position, you've got a tree there in your way. You've also got a fence on that home that is right on the corner there on the west side of that intersection, the northwest side. Also, you can see in this picture here, there's a driveway and a tree close to that intersection that's on the east side, the northeast side of it. And the individual that lives in that home commonly parks a full-size, large pickup truck in that driveway, which is obviously the right to do. But all of those things put together create serious sight distance issues for traffic trying to negotiate that coming from that direction.
This is the one you were referring to, wasn't it?
Yes. So, you got a tree there and then a driveway there where cars get parked, and it creates a significant sight distance issue. So, there's a number of concerns for this intersection. Because Jennings Lane is a, somewhat of a wide road, and it is a collector from Main down to the Frontage Road, traffic tends to get moving a little bit faster through that area. And because it's a curved road going through, that whole road can be kind of a sight distance issue. So, the concern, the initial concerns that were brought to me were that the request was to put in a four-way stop at that intersection. So, I went over and looked at, evaluated it, did the traffic count, found out that the traffic flows were pretty much equal on each leg. We contacted Joe Perrin, and he did a traffic engineering study on it, and he made the recommendation that we put in a four-way stop on that intersection because of the sight distance issues and so forth. Subsequent to that, Kevin Campbell and Randy Randall, Public Works Director, went over and took a look at it, and they became concerned about the actual construction, the makeup of that intersection, mainly due to that corner on the northwest side, and it's a kind of a wide, sweeping curb there. And their recommendation is to take that curb and move it out to the south approximately 25 feet, square up that intersection a little bit, and to do that project as soon as possible. Projected cost on that was roughly around $9,000.
Correct.
Correct. So, that, those two issues are, I guess, presented as corrections, four-way stop and this changing the intersection there. So, the Public Works Director, I guess I'm talking on his behalf here, is asking for authorization. Steve, correct me if I'm wrong.
Right. Yeah, let me clarify something at this point, chief. If all that we were intending to do here was convert this to a four-way stop, we would not be bringing this to you. We would just be doing it because the city traffic code gives the police chief the authority to make these decisions about, to administer the entire traffic code, and so he makes the decisions. He engages the professional consultants, like the traffic engineer that he mentioned, to help make those decisions. But if that's all we were intending to do, we wouldn't even have this before you. So, it really was the second issue recommended by, the second improvement recommended by Randy and Kevin is the reason it's before you, because it would require funding, transportation fund would be used for this purpose if you choose to go forward with it.
Thanks, Steve, for that clarification.
I just didn't want to create the impression that in the future, traffic regulation decisions can be decided by citizen petition or pressure from the citizens, even though citizens making us aware of those things is good and we can evaluate them, but we really don't, believe me, we don't want to get in the business of making traffic regulation decisions based on citizen petition. We want to do it on the basis of the Uniform Traffic Control Manual and those kind of things.
Correct. Thank you, Steve.
So, I think the question, my sense is that the council-
So I think the question, my sense is that the council supports safety improvements. And the question is how quickly can you make these improvements? And do you have to wait for the, the intersection modification to put in that four-way stop?
I would not put in the four-way stop to help it safe. I personally believe that you'll have people blowing the intersection. Do you have a pointer?
Yeah, right there.
My concern is, is if you put the four-way stops in, I've been up here and there's been a car parked here, a car parked here. People not recognizing that it's not a four-way stop could run this. This person thinks they have to stop. The safest, un safest part about an intersection, this four-way, is people changing from a single way to a four-way stop. People blow it all the time and it's a greater risk of somebody blowing it and getting hit. Kevin and I did an experiment last week. I parked my truck right here in a legal place. There's a car parked, a truck parked here in a legal place.
Randy, we've got that picture right there.
Yeah, go ahead and show that. So I parked here, the person's parked here. It's so far back. I think it's important for us to make it safe and we can do it in a week or two. Fred's already got prices. The company's agreed they could come in. Or Kevin, what did I say?
You can do it, you can do it this fall?
Yes.
Great.
Yes, we can do it this fall.
Let's do it.
Yeah, I know we don't want to have citizens necessarily directing the traffic. But I was, I was at this very intersection and I almost got hit and I thought, man, somebody should do something about this. Wait a minute, I can help out on this one, so I'm in complete support on it.
During my test, I drove Kevin's car down here and I just about got T-boned.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what happens.
We've got to move the stop bar up here so these people can see easterly. That's more important than anything, in my opinion, so that we can get the people so they can see. So we just need to change that radius so they can get there. So that would be my recommendation to do that. And then put the four-way in so that people know that it's safe and we're not tearing it up twice. Let's get the intersection changed and then. But one of my concerns is too, I think we've got to make sure we have a plan. For example, Paul wants to put four-way stop signs, but we need to know what things are going to be put up before we put them up. And we haven't got that yet. I don't know if Paul's talked about, he's got signs here and here. Can they be put back up or shouldn't they be put up? We just need to make sure whatever we do is the safest thing we can do at this intersection. It's a very important intersection, so.
Well, a first step in safety is narrowing up, so that looks fantastic.
You told you about that.
Narrowing and straightening.
We think this will make it safer.
That's what I was going to say too. So I agree with the citizen comment that we don't need the yellow striping, but then the shoulder striping makes a huge difference in safety. That's documented by evidence.
The only problem with that, if you shove them too close together, then they can hit. If the lanes are wide enough, that's not a problem. We can do that as well.
So it seems the weather dependent is to try to get the, the northwest improvements done as soon as possible.
That's what we'd recommend doing, getting them in.
So as you do that, are you just extending concrete? Or are you shifting the entire sidewalk on that corner?
We would shift the sidewalk. We would bring this out, the curving gutter out to here. And our intention is to run the sidewalk here, run the sidewalk and put in the handicap grab.
So it'll be a much better alignment.
Move the stop bars up here.
What, I'm sorry. One of the, one of the things as we were evaluating this, because this is part of the SNAP plan, that intersection is currently not marked appropriately for school crossings. And so we, we talked about getting the cross, crosswalks properly marked, but then we realized that if we're going to change that intersection, it would change how we mark the crossings. So we probably ought to get that done if we can do it quickly and then re-stripe it appropriately. And I would, I'm still prepared to, to put in the four-way stop there even with that.
Great.
I personally think that we may not get these lines in this year, this fall. But I think we'll try to get all the painting done that would be appropriate here. This is going to be such a long thing. We'll have to call somebody up and the weather may not be as good to have them come in. But we would try to get this intersection, this part of it. Once we understand what Paul and the M U T C wants us to do, then we'll follow that.
Well, whatever you can do optically for the east-west traffic, because they're, they're out of control. I mean, they're, they go through there way too fast and, and they're, they're all trained that that's not a four-way stop, so they, they go through there very fast. So as we, as we consider the east-west, whatever you can do optically to say, this really is a four-way stop now because.
Yeah, we would have a flashing, we would have a flashing red light attached.
Perfect.
To the sign.
For a period of time?
Yes.
Do we have any money left with the SNAP plan money to do anything like that?
To do what?
To do what?
Where's the money coming from?
That's what I mentioned earlier, the Transportation Fund, which is that separate fund we created for street improvements would be your source of funding for this.
Kevin and I feel very strongly this needs to be done.
Absolutely.
We think that it'll come out of the funding for our streets.
I think we're all in agreement. Do you need a motion to approve nine thousand dollars for this purpose?
At the risk of being thrown out of the meeting for saying something different, why is this any different than the intersection of Chase and Fourth West?
Well, the, the radiuses are different. This radius is like sixty feet, it's huge. And, and we don't have a skew like this at Chase Lane. They're much more perpendicular to each other.
If you have the same stop signs that you have at Chase Lanes, don't you solve the problem?
Well, how many times we've replaced those stop signs from the wind blowing them over has been our biggest. Well, and Chase Lane only stops one way.
I understand, that's what I'm saying, but you've got the stop going the wrong direction.
The traffic counts don't support it.
Well, actually.
Well, the sightlines are better on that intersection.
The sightlines are, they're two straight roads that intersect each other where you've got a curved road that intersects another curved road.
This part adds to it and the road is curved itself.
Yeah, it's, it's, this is horrible in comparison. I mean, the other one, you can at least see them coming. This, this one you can't really.
But Chase is a very dangerous intersection. We've had significant problems there.
Believe me, a lot of effort and study went into Chase and four hundred west.
Well, I've hated it ever since it's been done, frankly.
And the main reason, Bill, that it's not a four-way stop is because the traffic volumes are not balanced like this. They are significantly stronger going north and south than they are east and west. And so that was probably one of the differentiating factors. Plus the, the geometry of the intersection is better than this one.
That's correct.
But we did make some enhancements there. I don't know if you're aware of that. We improved the lighting at that intersection. And we increased the signage, the markings, all those things were done. Put the orange flags up. Aren't there orange flags on that one? So, so we've done everything short of putting in a traffic signal or a crossing guard there.
My friend, I've been here for thirty-four years. I've been through four police chiefs. And both Chase Lane and this one, we've had lots and lots of talks about it. It's been my understanding through all our talks, four-way saves, four-way stops are actually less safe because people get used to going through them and they T-bone people. I think changing Chase Lane could be actually worse in that regard. I think this one could as well, but Paul can make that decision. He's the one that has to make that decision, but we could have more wrecks based upon that as well.
Well, I, I mean, the change is very difficult because people assume that it's the same as it was last week. And I'm, I don't, I don't remember when we changed Chase.
The, the, I've been doing some research on this recently. A four-way stop actually does increase safety. What, where you have a problem is if you take it from a four-way to a two-way. Then you have approximately a forty percent increase in crashes. But going from a two-way to four-way does increase safety.
One of my concerns long-term though, we met with UDOT. UDOT wants us now to put in a road that will put a lot more onto the frontage road. This would be a great one east and west. Someday you may have to change it. I mean, we can do something temporary, but that's not my.
Yeah, that, that would be an issue. Once you put it up, you really shouldn't ever take it down unless you replace it with a light or a signal.
So do you want a motion to authorize?
Yeah, I'll motion to approve.
And maybe add another thousand on there.
Well, they have fifteen percent contingency in here. But, you know, given that, that the time element is part of it, I'd motion to approve a budget not to exceed ten thousand dollars to realign the intersection to provide the four-way stop as soon as practical.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll consider that passing unanimously.
As long as this is in the SNAP thing though, I, I'd like to see if we have some more problems like this that we're going after some state money to. I know on the Transportation Committee, they keep saying there's more money for the SNAP. I'll get some information on it and bring it back.
They do take that into consideration. I don't know that it's automatic. I think it's, you know, being in the SNAP plan does help us with the state in correcting problems.
They just came out with some more money. I'll get some information and get it to both of you.
Yeah, now I want to make sure there's no confusion here. This is not state money we're using to pay for this.
But I'd like to look into getting some state money for some other problems if we have more of these.
Yeah, we.
This one could have been resolved alone, criminal state money.
Probably not.
We, we get those notices each year and evaluate what the eligibility is. We've done quite a bit in the past with the, the annual UDOT money for school routes, but kind of addressed.
We're going to look at some, in the main part of town where we don't have sidewalks, trying to get those in. And so we'll be back and talk about that later.
Great, we look forward to these improvements. We'll, we'll expect those construction vehicles to be out there tomorrow digging up the asphalt. Let's make it happen as soon as possible. And thank you to the citizens who have expressed a lot of concern over this. Next on our agenda is, is a more lengthy discussion on the Davis County Natural Hazard Disaster Mitigation Plan. We can, we can take and have that discussion. Or Lynn has been here for a while waiting and we could also try to knock that out very quickly. I don't know if Paul or, do you all have time, if DL has time constraints?
DL Feifield is here. He's ready to go forward. He said he, he can condense it down a little bit from what we were planning.
Okay, I think this is an important topic that we want to hear from him for sure.
Do you want to proceed with that now?
If Lynn, if you're willing to, to be patient a few more minutes.
I, I hope you, I hope you got the message that it was eight fifty was my estimate now.
Oh, yeah, well, I just noticed it.
He came early on his own volition. He, he was given an estimated time that was.
Great, well, if you'd introduce DL and we'd love to, to hear from you and DL about this disaster mitigation plan.
Okay, so just as an introduction, the other hat that I wear is Emergency Management Director, which I've been doing since two thousand and two. In two thousand and nine, we adopted a pre-disaster mitigation plan at that point. These plans are put in place to try to identify hazards that we currently have and mitigate mitigation strategies to help to improve our, our exposure to those hazards. And, and they're to be, they're supposed to be done every five years. So we're a little bit behind the schedule here. But we've been working on that as a county for quite some time now. And DL has been a consultant and been helping us put together that plan as a county and as a city. We've, we've kind of been working together on this. And he comes to us with a thirty-plus years of experience with the state of Utah, working emergency management. So we've been working together on this plan. And I'll just go ahead and turn the time over to DL and let him talk about the specifics.
We look forward to hearing how you're going to stop those earthquakes.
Good evening, my name is DL Feifield. I live in Fruit Heights. We live in a world full of all kinds of hazards. And FEMA generally classifies these hazards into three types. Natural hazards, technological hazards, and man-made hazards. Natural hazards, as you have a pretty good grasp on, there's, there's a huge list of them out there. Most of them are weather-related. And, you know, severe storms and lightning, floods, dark of night, plagues of locusts, those kind of things. And we find that as we look at these hazards, there's nothing we can do to prevent them. Not one of these natural hazards, earthquakes, floods, tornadoes, hurricanes are preventable. So FEMA has said, you know, what we'd like to see happen is communities do what they can to mitigate against the impacts. That's all we can do, is mitigate against their impacts. Starting, FEMA was formed in nineteen seventy-nine under President Carter. And starting less than ten years after that, FEMA realized that there were parts of the country that seemed to have the same disasters over and over and over again. And they'd have a disaster, a flood or hurricane or tornado or something, and FEMA would come in and, and FEMA comes in after these things and with deep pockets and they pay taxpayer money to, to restore things, get people back on their feet again. And only to have the same thing happen the next year or two years later. And they even have a term for it that they call recurring. It's, it's a recurring property. And FEMA says, you know, there's got to be something better. And so in nineteen eighty-nine, FEMA drew up some, some legislation that went through Congress and passed, which is the Natural Disaster Mitigation Act, which compels states and counties and cities to look at their threats and hazards and come up with strategies, as, as Paul said, to mitigate against the impacts of these, these threats and hazards. So it went out to the states and down to the, the counties. And so starting in about nineteen ninety-two, we've been on about a six or seven-year cycle, which is the requirement under FEMA, to create these plans, develop them, and then every six or seven years, update them. And so we're about in the third iteration of this now as, as we've just completed work on the twenty sixteen version of the Natural Disaster Mitigation Plan for Davis County. I was part of the team that developed the plan, the previous plan, as Paul said, in twenty, in twenty oh nine. And then I was working for Wasatch Front Regional Council. And at that time, the Wasatch Front Regional Council was doing the plan for five, the five counties that comes under WFRC and Davis County being one of them. And so when this plan came up for renewal, Ellis Brew with the Sheriff's Office called me and said, help, help. Can you come and, and provide some assistance, technical assistance, get this plan moving? So that's been about eighteen months ago. And we've been working on that. It's been a very good process. And I'll say the, the real gratifying part of it is we have fifteen jurisdictions plus the county in, in Davis County. And we have an amazing participation by all the jurisdictions. And a super amazing participation by Centerville City has been terrific. Paul wears that emergency management hat and he's very, he's very serious about it and has done just an amazing job. Anytime we've needed stuff from the cities, Centerville Cities, they're there first. They get their stuff there first. And so, you know, kudos to Centerville, to Chief Child. So we've completed this process. We've completed the planning process with involvement. And we had a, a curve thrown at us right at the last minute when FEMA told us, in the past, we have just done this on a county-wide basis. Well, guess what? We want every city to now have a specific section in there outlining those identified threats and hazards. And specific to the city and outlining strategies that the city will undertake for the next five to six years in mitigating these strategies. Now mitigation is two parts. And there's structural and non-structural mitigation measures. And structural mitigation measures are doing things like building dams or levees or in your case, building debris basins at, at the mouths of your canyons. So that they, they capture flood runoff and flash floods. Or they're non-structural and largely non-structural mitigation measures are planning and zoning. So planning zoning regulations that say, you know, you can't build your dream house over there next to the, to the creek where we get periodic flooding. If you do, we will require you to have a structural mitigation measure of elevation of that dream house, six feet in the air because our FEMA flood map says that that's the hundred-year flood plain and, and that's what you have to do. That's, those are some of the techniques. So again, when, when FEMA threw us that curve at the last minute, we put out the, the word to the, to the cities, say, you know, and told them that they've got to get stuff in. Centerville City was the first one I received, so good job. So here we are. We have submitted the completed plan to the state who approved it. And they've sent that on to FEMA who has also approved our initial draft plan. So we're pretty excited about that. Especially as a consultant, I'm always, you know, pretty excited to see the work go forward and, and get approved. The next step is, is compelling the cities to now adopt that plan. The reason that you are really strongly encouraged. The reason that you are really strongly encouraged to adopt this plan is if we have a disaster, FEMA comes in and they have an application process, excuse me, for getting assistance, for disaster assistance. And just about the first question on that application is, "Do you have an adopted, approved, pre-disaster mitigation plan, yes or no?" And if the answer's no, it's, "See you later," almost literally. And so our next step here is to go now to all fifteen cities in the county and before city councils and get them to adopt this plan. You are already covered under the two thousand and nine plan, which the city council at that time adopted, so no problem there. But now that we've got an approved plan that's been approved by the state and FEMA, we are now going back through that process.
Thank you. Are there any specific areas of the city's plan that you would want to point out, either you or Chief Child, as elected officials, we should focus on?
Well, you know, when we look at the threats and hazards, we list them all in there, and you've got to get it right. Understanding the nature of the threats and hazards is the foundation of emergency planning. You've got to identify those hazards. You then go through and you talk about a threat assessment. How bad can it get? So let's talk earthquake. That will be, if you will, the Katrina for Utah. And we anticipate as strong as a seven-point-one earthquake. And a seven-point-one earthquake along the Wasatch Fault would be devastating, absolutely devastating. That said, it's far more likely when we look at, that's the worst-case scenario. We look at what's the more likely scenario that we have to deal with. And so in the plan, we look at things like the severe winter storms. We get them practically every year. East canyon winds. It's a fact of life in Davis County. Those kinds of things. And so looking at those threats and hazards and identifying them and then categorizing them makes a difference. So our earthquake threat is significant. We live on the Wasatch Fault. We have an earthquake in Utah every day. Okay? We live in earthquake country. However, as we know, our last declared disaster in Davis County was the twenty-eleven December wind storm, wind event, that caused nearly four million dollars in public damage in Davis County, which was a declared disaster. So we consider those things, and one of the great things that Paul has done here in the Centerville section is that he has outlined the activities that the city has undertaken since twenty oh nine to make the city more, as we like to say, disaster-resistant, and those are mitigation measures, and they're listed on there.
Yeah, so that's what I just wanted to kind of point out here, is you go through this. Since two thousand and nine, there's been a significant amount of work that's been done through the city. And a lot of it has been done through the Public Works Department, our drainage and so forth. We're currently working on the urban wildland fire interface. We've been working on that pretty hard, and Bill's been involved with that quite a bit. So there's a lot of work that's been done. We've met a lot of the goals that we put in place in two thousand and nine, and some of those are still continuing, and there's funding streams that have been put aside for that. So the work continues. There's still a lot to do, but a lot, a great deal of work has been completed. And I don't want to really go through the whole, you know, all that, but it's a work in progress. But I would recommend that the plan be approved by resolution.
Thank you. I want to ask Bill, you lead our emergency preparedness, or your emergency preparedness liaison. Any comments?
I have several, but with the other things, I'll keep them short. I'd point out, we had a presentation from Randy four or six weeks ago on the water system. And I've not had the plan to spend time and read completely through it, but I would assume that part of Randy's preparations are included in the plan because as part of the mitigation, in the event that we have a seven-point-one or whatever it is, any other kind of a significant problem, he has multiple sources of water, and water can be piped throughout the city from many different storage facilities, mitigating one of the major risks to our society, which I am absolutely and totally impressed with. There's a number of other things that are in process. I guess the one other thing that I'd comment on, and I did see, I have seen this in the plan. It talks about the fact that we do drills twice a year to try and prepare personnel to step up and step into the void that such an event would create, so.
Yeah, we've actually been doing those three times a year.
Yeah, two to three, yeah, three times. Sometimes two, sometimes three, but yeah. So a lot of effort goes in. Paul does a tremendous job. And I guess I would like to propose that we accept the plan.
Is that a motion to approve twenty sixteen, twenty-six?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Appreciate that, and I think all of us appreciate Chief Child and his team, the emergency management team that gets together. I think we're in significantly better shape than we were, say, ten years ago or fifteen years ago in terms of our preparedness. It's a great group that you have together.
Yeah, and I want to emphasize that it is a team, and Steve's been leading out on it. He's done an excellent job on that. And so it's not just me. There's a lot of people involved.
There's a lot of people involved.
So before we adopt this, originally, we'd scheduled this for public comment. It's not required by law, but I'd like to, before, we've got a motion on the table in a second, but before we adopt it, let's open it up. And is there anybody from the public who would like to comment on this disaster premitigation plan? Mayor, if you'd come and, we'd love to hear from you. You're always welcome here.
Thank you. I'm Priscilla Todd, seventeen fifty-two, Country Circle here in Centerville. I just have two questions that if I could ask. Does FEMA still allow homes to be built within a ten-foot area of an earthquake fault? I know that used to be what they would allow, and so many of the homes that came into this city were built with an earthquake fault running within ten feet of the foundation.
I don't know that FEMA regulates that at all.
Okay. At the time that I was in office, we actually tried to mitigate and not allow homes to be built in certain areas. And we had a representative from FEMA come and tell us we did not have the authority to stop that.
Identification, clearly identifying where the fault runs can be very, very difficult to articulate. It's, and because the fault, where the fault moved last doesn't mean that that's necessarily where the fault will move next time. And so it can be, it can be pretty tough.
And I appreciate that. I'm just thinking in terms of the east bench. We had documented earthquake faults where we had done excavation and could document where they were. So it was a defined location. But that's just something that, if that is still the case, I would like to request that the city at least consider trying to put some pressure on that the city be allowed to have some authority and some ability to do some mitigation in some of these things where we do have documented proof.
I think we have some standards in place today, maybe Steve.
Let me respond to that. And if Corey was here, he could do it better than me. But I don't know exactly what the standards are, but I know that just a few years ago, we dealt again with a property owner on the hillside who came in with another development plan for an area that hasn't been developed yet. And he's come back several times with plans, and I do recall staff reiterating that, "Look, you can't be..." I'm remembering within fifty feet of this fault line, as we have determined as best we can where it is. So that was a factor that actually prevented this developer from doing what he wanted to do in the fashion he wanted to do it. The ground still remains undeveloped, probably primarily because of that. So I think it is a tougher standard that we're trying to adhere to now. I just can't tell you exactly what it is.
And I appreciate it. I'm old time, so, but I just thought I would bring that up because that is why we have some of the homes where they are. And I do know that there are earthquake faults that are documented within ten feet of a foundation of homes in the city. The other one was with flooding. We had a very difficult time mitigation, doing any mitigation on building within a flood plain. There were areas, I was here in eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-three floods. Areas that were under six, seven feet of water have homes. And so it's just something that I think if the city can try to develop that relationship with federal agents, when I called back, most of them had never been here. They'd never been to Centerville. They'd never been to Utah. They were doing everything based on modeling that was being done back east. So just something to consider in the For What It's Worth Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Todd. And I hope as you drive along the frontage road and hit those bumps, you'll appreciate that we're putting new oversized culverts in this year in anticipation of widening that next year.
Steve, I would be curious to get more factual information. So maybe just in your next manager's report, could you come back with that?
Regarding the earthquake, is the earthquake faults and what the regulations are.
And what our current ordinance states.
I know there's something in the hillside plan right now that requires geotechnical analysis. I'm not clear if it's all areas of the city or just the hillside plan.
Yeah, if they're in the hillside zone, the developer has to provide studies and analysis of the earthquake faults and.
Right, but that sounded something more concrete and tangible, so that I'd be interested in more about.
And in case the council's not aware of this, all of our drainages now are protected with a debris basin. Five drainages that affect Centerville, and all five now have debris basins on them. The most recent one being the two-million-dollar dam on the Dual Creek. Freedom Hills Park is also a debris basin. In case you didn't realize that, it was built multipurpose. It takes, it intercepts potential debris flow from the Lone Pine Drainage, which is the fifth one going north. The last one affecting the city.
None of the other cities in Davis County have all of their canyons with debris basins, except Centerville.
That's great to hear. I should probably go ahead, unless there's anyone else who would like to speak, and close the public comment. And note that we've got a motion on the table to adopt ordinance twenty sixteen, twenty-six and approve this disaster premitigation plan. Any further discussion on it? I've been expressing appreciation to DL and the chief and the staff for their work. Then I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your efforts here. All right, before we go to a break, I'd like to take item number nine, which is the professional services agreement related to Island View Park renovation. And Steve, if you want to take the staff report on this.
Actually, I would like Lynn to lead out, and I'll add too.
That would be great.
He's been sitting so long, he can't walk.
Lynn, thanks for being patient with us. Lynn is the chair of our Parks and Rec.
Do you care which place I speak from?
Wherever you want. You can have this chair if you want.
Call it in. Okay, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. What I'm here today to request is approval of a professional service agreement relating to the island park renovation and the hiring of a landscape architect to do that. Couple of reasons for that. One is we've already held our first public meeting with our focus group and made some really good progress on trying to determine the things that should be done to the park. Second reason is, is that we still have our goal of trying to submit an application for Land and Water Conservation Act funds, which has to be done in February. We have further information on that. There is no limit on how much we can request, so our proposal will be for fifty percent of the cost of the park, which can be a substantial amount. And so we really don't want to miss this opportunity to do that, not knowing what the funding for that park would be or for that organization in the future. We have, we realize that we have a city engineer that has given us some estimates, but we felt like that the hiring of a landscape architect in a company who is currently involved in developing parks in this area would give us a better, more realistic budget that we were going to work with. We want to get that budget as close as possible before we present it both for the grant and to the city council for approval. The timeline on this would be that if we submit in February of two thousand and seventeen, we would not, we don't anticipate getting an answer back from the federal government until two thousand and eighteen. And then we would have two years to complete the park, and use the funds that they allocated to us. We also determined that they do not prorate the funds. They either approve the project or they don't. You don't just get partial of what you get, although they may come back and say some of the things that we request are not applicable to the fund, but we think we've got a pretty good handle on what can be done. So I think Steve has the proposal that we ask. I think it's with a company that you're currently doing business with, which is what we ask for, to try to see somebody to use a company that had already been vetted by the city and was comfortable with both the quality of their work and the prices of their work. So I don't know if you just want to go over the proposal.
Well, they have that in their packets. It's a proposal from MGB Plus A, prepared by Dan Sontag, who is sitting in the audience. And Dan, if you would like, can show you some of the similar work done for other communities doing similar schematic plans, for example, if you want to take the time. So he's just, he's here for that possibility, if you want to see some of that work, similar work done elsewhere. I've become very comfortable with him, his qualifications and quality of his work. This proposal, I believe, is very reasonable, the fee of fifty-nine-hundred dollars to get us to a point where we have a schematic plan and a more reliable cost estimates. I think that will serve us well as we plan and seek grants, money.
The plan itself, you've got to have at least the initial drawing of what you're going to have and a determination, excuse me, and a determination of what it is you're going to put in the park. You can move stuff around afterwards, but they want to see that whatever you apply for, you actually build, whether it's in the right-hand corner or the left-hand corner, they're not too concerned with. But they do want to make sure that that conceptual plan is reasonably accurate about what you're going to put in.
I'd also agree. We've had great success. Dan has worked for us a couple of times in the past and done quality work. I feel very comfortable with this, and it's really a required step to get these plans in place before we can have better cost estimates and apply for grants and move forward.
Yeah, might give us a better chance at getting lots of assistance, big bucks.
Any concerns or questions from Dan?
We're going to ask for lots of money.
Do you want to see examples or?
I think Stephanie wanted to say something.
I do have a concern. I feel a little bit like we're rushing or like we're not looking at the whole picture. We do have a massive cemetery problem. And you may not be getting the phone calls that I'm getting on that, but I'm getting several of them in a very short time period, and I don't think they're going to go away anytime soon, now that the official number of available lots is zero. So I think it's, until the council does the hard work of saying, "Are we going to take part of that park and use it as cemetery space or not?", I think we're premature to pay somebody to draw up what to do with our park.
If I may comment on that, one of the things that I found out was that the Island View Park is already a land and water grant park, which means that, to some extent, you can't change the park. You can't take the existing park structure and change it to another use. I think that there would, if you want, I can get some more clarification on exactly what the funds were used for that park and my understanding of what the consequences of using that for some other purpose. But I do believe that it requires you to... But I do believe that it requires you to at least refund all of the money that you got for the grant originally and that, when that park was originally done.
That would be helpful to know.
That is one of the consequences of doing the land and water grant, is that it is a park in perpetuity and you can't use it for other purposes. But I think at the same time that the council is considering what to do with the cemetery, we need to be prepared to, we can, we need to be prepared with the plan. And if you want to exempt a certain portion of that in our application, that is perfectly acceptable to the state and to the federal government, is that you say, we're going to apply for the funds for this portion of the park and we're going to exclude this section until we make a decision on the cemetery. And that happens all the time with them. And that's perfectly acceptable. We just slice off that part and say, we're not sure about this piece. It's probably, it may be the least expensive of the piece of the whole project anyway, if you're talking about that lower level. But we can do that. But I think moving forward with it would give us the opportunity to move in both directions and be prepared by February to make the application for the grant.
That would be really helpful to, if you have that available or.
I'll talk to the person at the state and get her to give me a clarification of just what might happen if we took part of that for the cemetery.
Well, and to understand the ramifications, what exactly was done in the past. That would help me a lot.
I will do that.
Can we have, can we have our cake and eat it too, maybe increasing the amount slightly and include that comment in the discussion for the sketches and designs? I happen to have the map up and there are some lots, it appears, and I haven't been up to see it, but there are some lots towards the north from the northeast corner of the park. And maybe something could be done to keep the park essentially the same size by cutting off that lower level, which, and I don't live close by there, but is primarily parking.
We don't, we don't consider the parking as part of the park, since I live next door.
Okay, well, all I'm saying is, is get the park up on one level and take that lower level and possibly do something with the road to give us some cemetery space and integrate that into the project that we're talking about at the moment.
So I think you'd still end up with, from a design perspective, design it with the full amenities you anticipate having and just have one drawing that says, this is cemetery, you know? Just keep the amenities number the same so you can look at the same number. And if we decide that part of it's going to be annexed into the cemetery, your amenities number isn't changing, just your arrangement of where you're putting things, just to keep it simple. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I appreciate Stephanie bringing up the cemetery issue. We talked with the previous council about this and I didn't gain much traction with them about trying to solve that problem. It's an expensive problem to solve. I would love to take the, have the city council do a field trip sometime, can visit Island View Park and also visit the top of 100 South and look at, well, we already stated in our goals, the potential, asking our staff to look at the rough cost estimate of keeping open space on top of that area.
The assignment you gave us was to come up with the cost of a feasibility study to study that.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Which we haven't put together.
But I'm guessing we could probably even get Dan to go on a field trip with us to Island View Park and even the cemetery or the land up above and have some very high-level discussions on that. But it's a very challenging.
Let's do it before it snows.
Challenging problem to solve. So the issue before you is to approve this professional services contract. Lynn, you're recommending approval.
Yes.
And to allocate the funding for this, Steve, comes from where?
Well, I assume it would be RAP tax. That's what you have to be assuming, because we don't have a budget elsewhere for this purpose.
Parks Capital Improvement Fund is not eligible for this if you come from.
Right, because this is not a new capacity. This is renovating an existing park, so you can't use Parks Capital Improvement Funds. You can't use Park Impact Fee revenues for this purpose. So yes, RAP tax fund is what your source would be.
So I guess I would look, unless you have more questions and want to discuss more with Lynn or with Dan or see examples, look for a motion to use RAP tax funds to approve and authorize a professional services agreement related to the Island View Park renovation conceptual planning phase.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion on this? I think it's a wise thing to do this planning. It's a relatively small amount when you compare the millions of dollars that might be involved with renovation. We need to do some planning, or at least hundreds of thousands.
Well, and if I may add this, you know, I can see the possible scenario where come February, for whatever reasons, you don't, you decide, we're not going to submit for the grant at this time. I don't think we've wasted this effort. This is effort that's going to be useful to us whenever we move forward in a more serious way, whether it's next February or something after that.
Good point. Further comments? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you, Todd.
Thanks.
Thanks, Lynn. I want to say this guy has really.
I've been amazed at this guy's.
Personal investment of his time to contact and work with the state and learn all this about the past projects. I never knew all that stuff about the Land and Water Conservation Fund money that's been used.
He found the idea to submit and then we had a Parks Committee meeting and had a bunch of questions, like 30 questions, and then within a few days, Lynn had them all thoroughly answered and very impressive.
So my personal thanks to you for relieving my burden.
And you know how we reward good, you know how we reward good performance around here? We just ask for more. That's the way we do it. Given we've been at this for quite a while, unless there's objections, I'd suggest we take a quick break.
I agree.
Let's take a five minute.
I suspect.
Okay, we are back in session again. It is 9:30, 35, and we have a few more items on our agenda. The, we tabled the industrial very high. The next item on our agenda is to continue the discussion regarding potential uses of RAP tax revenue. And Steve, I'd like to start on this, assuming the council wants to have this discussion tonight and not table it till.
I wouldn't mind tabling it.
The next meeting where we don't have as much on the agenda.
The next agenda is pretty light at this point, relatively speaking.
I'd move we table it.
I promise thrills and chills for one audience. I think the issue is the longer we put it off, we are pulling money out of this in a nickel and dime fashion, and the sooner we can get to a unified plan, the better off we're going to be. But I'm open both ways.
I'm fine tabling it. I think Steve, maybe before we table, Steve, could you give us some guidance on what, if any, decisions need to be made?
In the near future?
In the near future.
Excuse me, that's a good cookie. Well, I have assumed that you're going to go forward with at least the next phase, and I presume the next two phases for the community park expansion. So I have gone ahead and, in order to keep us on schedule, so to speak, I have told Kevin to go ahead and continue the design work for that Phase Two, we call it, the next phase for community park expansion. I mean, that's one that you need to ratify, I guess.
Right.
That you're okay with him going ahead with that design work, because that makes sense. We need to make that park usable, which would require the next two phases, as I've laid out in an earlier work session with you, that handout that I've attached again to tonight's meeting. You know, beyond that, actually, I think, I don't know that there's any you got to make right away.
And, okay, and I mean, the timing of that is, I think everybody understands that our staff is proceeding as if we're going to finish that, that park.
At least the next two phases, because those two phases won't put in a pavilion or a playground, but the next two phases will make the park usable.
The biggest, I guess in my mind, the biggest decision that needs to be made in the relatively near term is, are we going to take that aggressive position of borrowing some money internally so we can try and do the work sooner?
Correct. And the timing of that, I think we have a couple of months, because the work, I'd like to get it out to bid in the winter months so we get better prices when we put it to bid in the winter, it seems, than when we wait.
Well, put it out to, we hope to, I would say, the bidding in like February, so we're ready to start March. The question you've raised though, Bill, are you asking, do we want to try to do both phases in one year or are we going to do the two phases over two years?
I thought there was discussion about doing the two phases in one year by using a loan to cemetery funds to allow us to do that. And I, while I don't know that I would sanction or agree with going out to debt to do that, probably speaking into the mic, sorry. If we're doing it from ourselves internally, I don't know that I have the same reservation, but I'm not ready to vote for it tonight. I think it ought to be discussed and explored and make sure, but I think there would be a substantial benefit by getting it done sooner rather than later, and in theory, some cost savings.
I certainly have been advocating that and pushing staff a little bit, probably more than they're comfortable with. How could we accelerate the completion of that park?
Yeah, there are some practical considerations, and I don't want to belabor it tonight. I would like, if you want us to seriously consider that, I need some time to go back to staff and say, okay, evaluate this possibility.
Which we did in our previous meeting, I thought.
Yeah, I'd love to have the city council say, let's take a serious look at this. I need to go to the rec board with Tammy and say, rec board, are you willing to either donate money or are you willing to lend us at low or no interest? Because we see you as going on an extension of Centerville City.
And we've already been talking about it. I think they'd be very friendly to it.
They have a pretty big pool of money that's just sitting there in the treasurer's fund. This is a pretty low-risk thing for them, and it would be a way to, they get a lot of criticism, at least Bountiful does, because they've gotten rid of a number of playing fields in the wider community. So I've heard support from the other mayors that, yeah, we'll entertain something. And then I'd like to have Steve and the staff look carefully at, okay, if we looked at the cemetery perpetual care fund or another fund, what would we recommend and how, talking to our professionals, Kevin and Bruce and others, how much could this park completion be accelerated?
Okay, I mean, if the council wants us to do that, we will take.
Should we talk about that next time then?
Well, I think if we're going to lead off that discussion, sanctioning is always better than ratification. Just straight out. It is, it's always better than ratification. So if nothing else, in terms of the RAP buckets, we need to at least say, the lion's share is here, just so we have the funds and have them broken out, because there are organizations waiting on us. CenterPoint wants to know what we're doing. Whittaker Museum wants to know what we're doing. Parks and Trails wants to know what we're doing. And what we've been doing is we've been just feeding this information out a little bit at a time, and now we're talking about the parks in the general sense that we want to accelerate that. I think it's great. I don't have a problem with it. I just want to say, okay, if you had expectations, this is what they really are relative to what we're doing.
I felt really comfortable with the numbers, Bill, throughout last time. So I guess I, my question would just be, what is our goal here? How specific are we trying to get?
I think you want to be a little bit flexible. I mean, I would love for the council to say, we're going to tentatively plan on up to 85% for Parks and Trails, continuing on approving specific contracts and specific things, up to 10% for various performing arts organizations and facilities, and up to 5% for Whittaker Capital Improvements as a plan over the next, you know, two to three years. And then come back and have specific plans authorized. Are we going to, with CenterPoint, are we going to authorize the HVAC contract that's directed at the building? With Whittaker, we've got a whole list of improvements. What do we, what do we really tackle first?
Right, and that's what I'm saying. And see, I would actually flip those numbers. I'd go 85, 10 for Whittaker, 5 for CenterPoint. And those are the, at least from that perspective, we have established, here's the size of the buckets. Don't get your hopes up one way or another for whatever groups are out there that are looking for funds. Because I think the longer that we take to at least establish what those thresholds are, I mean, they can do the math based on what we put up with the RAP taxes are. They can do the math on what would potentially be available. And for CenterPoint, did we know if they ever received a grant from Bountiful?
They did not.
They did not this year.
They applied, but rejected.
It was rejected.
Denied.
Bountiful did make some grants to a couple of other arts organizations and relatively small ones to the Chalk Art Festival and to the Summer Fest or, I mean, they always cover some of this, but BDAC, relatively small amounts. My impression is Bountiful is very focused on their, on this mill park and I was very disappointed, but that's what they decided to do this year.
Well, did they say, I mean, did they say anything? Was it because we were late? Was it because they just didn't like us?
The feedback, they felt like the application that CenterPoint had submitted, which in my opinion, had capital improvement projects, was not in line with their expectations for capital improvement projects. I, in my personal opinion, it was kind of an excuse to say, we have bigger problems. It was the same day as the city hall meeting where they had a significant number of people and I, in my opinion, they had a lot of other things that are priorities for them and they thought, what would happen if we pushed this off a year? But I don't, I can't speak for them.
Fair enough. I mean, maybe we don't get to that point tonight, but I think that's where I'm headed is if the plan is to accelerate Project A, being the community park and its phases, then some serious discussion has to be doing something very similar to Bountiful, which is, you know what? You guys are in the black this year. Keep doing what you're doing. Let's talk again next year. But at least so we have an allocation set up so that all expectations are met and that the council and staff is sanctioned rather than ratified on activities that take place.
That's a good idea. And I like your numbers.
I appreciate the commitment to the Whittaker Capital Improvement Plan. If I look at the long-term impact to our community, the number of users, the need to keep that facility, the Performing Arts Center vibrant, I would like to see the council make a significant commitment, if it's not exactly 10%, to take on something significant to, that shows, yes, we're very committed to keeping that facility in great shape.
Robin and I were just chatting over here about that the visitors to the theater end up helping pay for the building or have in the past because they up our RAP tax collection because they spend money in our community. And that's been verified and calculated. And so I think that when we look at numbers, I mean, we all have a love for the museum. We all have desires to do many things in this community. I think it's important for us, though, to try to step back and do an impartial analysis, take into consideration the value of the building that we already have invested, the number of people touched, things like that, to make sure those allocations are justifiable and appropriate.
And what we would said was.
And what we would said was, Tammy said she'd like to see Centerville and Bountiful get a reduced rate for the shows, because we pay something through our rap tax, but I said, they still need the same amount of money to run, so if we dropped our price tickets a dollar, we're gonna have to up the other people's three or four dollars.
Correct.
And when they come, they do help the, the surrounding businesses, so I think we're probably better off to just-
Keep it.
-keep it as is, rather than trying to up everybody that's coming in.
And what do you do for Davis County, which invested in, and-
Yeah, yeah.
And my impression is the county is, is, is looking very seriously at-
Continuing to invest.
Continuing some support, I think it depends somewhat on what Centerville's commitment is and what, how persuasive we can be. They, they see it as, as something worth-
Well, there's no doubt that it adds value to the community, none at all. I, I think that we have to look at, in terms of priorities, the park is free access, everyone can use the park, not everyone can use the theater. Um, it's, it is a nonprofit.
They have, they have some events that are, we don't charge for, the majority of shows absolutely are, ticket prices are-
Yeah.
Do we, do, do we do what Tammy, and I think I mentioned it as well, do we suggest to the theater, and in the absence of Bountiful's participation, send a message by encouraging, uh, some kind of an event that the theater hosts free of charge for Centerville residents?
Well, I think one thing that they do for Centerville residents that, that they would not do if, if it was not a public facility, is allow the Junior High Musical to be hosted, and they allow private groups to come in and rent it, especially nonprofits at reduced rates. And I've been advocating with them all along, that, look, you, allowing the Junior High to put on a performance there is good for you, it allows new people in, and frankly, this is the public's building, and so this is one thing you can do once a year to, to recognize that this is a, a public facility.
We've all helped pay for it.
That everyone is, yeah, everyone has contributed to it, so, that there's, they, for a while, worked with some of the elementary schools, and they do some, help, they help some of the elementary schools, but usually those productions are done at the elementary schools, and they provide costumes or set pieces, um, and, and not have them try to come and use the facility. The, the academy is, of course, doing, the enrollment is, is way up since Danny and Wendy Inkley, who are Centerville residents, took over the-
But there's a cost to that.
There's a cost to that, right, that's, that's similar to recreation classes.
Mm-hmm. When we, when we had that, uh- Was it a dinner?
The gala?
No, not the gala, there was something else, 'cause I had a conflict the night of the gala. Uh, there was something else that was a, actually, it was a freebie, as I recall.
So there was, we also, uh, during the legislative session, I think you were invited to-
That's what it was.
-participate in the, the Davis, uh, Hospital in Layton, sponsored a night with the legislators.
And that was legislators from what?
From the state legislature, and they had other, invited other public officials to come participate in that dinner, and-
And that was kind of an extra ad hoc event, wasn't it?
Correct, right.
That was my impression.
Yeah, they, they have a number of ad hoc events, they try to rent out the theater when it's not being used in between shows, but that was a public event to try to gain support.
I guess I would really like to see something come back to Centerville residents, and so can we plant the seed that they do some kind of an event like that, now they can't, we can't everybody from Centerville go, but, um, put something out in Steve's newsletter that, uh, there's gonna be a special program done through the theater, and any resident who's interested in getting into a drawing for the tickets can submit their name to the website and draw out tickets. How many seats are there?
Five hundred. So, I, I think they would argue that the, the biggest thing they do for our community that's free of charge is the Fairy Tale Festival, that anyone can, can attend, and if you go to the Fairy Tale Festival and you want your face painted, or you want to attend a, you know, the knights class, or the princess etiquette class, you have to, you, you pay, but-
Mm-hmm.
It, it's a money-losing, uh, venture right now, and they view that as kind of a community gift of, I mean, they also use it to try to get interest, but that's, that's a, a no-cost thing that, uh, you can take your grandkids to, and, outside of that, I'm trying to think of other-
Well, see, I, I don't think that necessarily people consider it a public space, though, like the library, everyone knows, oh, I can go to the library, I can get the, uh, I can get the, uh, room, and for five bucks, I can get the piano, so they recognize that as a public asset that they can use. The way that the theater conducts its business currently, people do not look at that as, hey, there's a black box theater that I can get hold of. They don't.
Some of, some of the theater, uh, people that are, are familiar with the arts do, and they have recitals there, piano recitals, or, or, you know, uh-
See, I've been told by residents, they try and get access to the black box theater, and they say-
And they can't.
-it's never available, you can never get it.
It, it is a challenge, certainly is a challenge.
So, again, it's a public facility that's not available to the public as a general thing, so I, I don't wanna belabor that point, because what I'm looking at is, we gotta pick our priorities, we have so much water we can carry for the next year or two, and it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, and have for weeks, is that the park is the highest priority. If the theater were in trouble, and Centerpoint was not in the black, I would be more concerned about them, but they're viable, they've got plenty of participation in the community, um, they had their dip at, at the, the taxes for quite a while, uh, with the understanding that the next go-around would, would concentrate on other things, and, uh, I, I think it's appropriate that we, we put the parks and, and the museum as the priority, they've been on hold for a while, and, and fix that infrastructure.
Yeah, I think what, um, Bill proposed last time was something like eighty-five, five, five, and then five remaining flexible.
Similar to maybe Bountiful's process, in that we have some money that is there, and you would just need to convince us that you're the worthy cause, right, that we go to.
That was kind of my thought process.
Mm-hmm, something like that.
Well, just like from coming up needing the money, I mean, it, obviously can't use the rap tax or slide bars, but things come up, but-
Yeah.
Unless we declared a trail, right?
That's right. But, 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 so I think things are gonna come up, that, you know, there could be an emergency, something in the, the park breaks that's major, or-
Sure.
You know, we have a major something in the museum that breaks and floods, or-
Or that they have something at the, uh, at the theater that has a problem.
Yeah, so, I'd like to have five percent that we have to keep for, especially where we're gonna be borrowing.
I can go for eighty-five, five, and five.
You know, we're using up everything that's coming in, so I'd really like to have a little contingency fund.
I like those bucket sizes, I, I mean, we, the, the problem is, is when we look at our total number, any one of these organizations can be hungry enough to eat up more than we're gonna get in rap tax during the entire time.
Right, of course, yeah.
So, I mean, consuming is never gonna be a problem, parceling it out is always gonna be a issue, I'm fine with an eighty-five, five, five, sort of, set up with a five contingency.
So then do- I'm just really concerned that we, that we tackle some of the safety liability things that the city faces because of the museum.
Sure, I agree.
We, we don't have a liability, a legal liability issue in the same manner in some of our other things, um, that lighting and the, the dangers and the things that we're so vulnerable to, I think that's something that needs to be tackled right away.
I'm not opposed to that, and, and I, I think getting that path lighted and, and wheelchair accessible is a, is a top priority, so.
And I think that goes into the same thing, if, if we can accelerate that and get it done, I mean, there's, yeah, we, we have some priorities that really we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be pushing off, and the museum, definitely the lighting and the pathway, I would even go so far as to say that the paved parking would make that a much more usable facility, I mean, you get out there in the evening and you're stumbling around, it's not, it's not a safe condition. And they do host a lot of events, a lot of them happen to be towards the twilight.
And they're, they're free.
Yeah, and they're all free.
So there's, there's public access to a public building that, that's more available.
Correct, and, and as a council, you need to think about, do you, do you want to up the, the level of, of commitment to the museum, because that will basically require more, more and more-
We want to solve some of the, some of the problems that have been ongoing, so that we don't have the increased liability.
Be about, um, nineteen thousand a year.
Hundred dollars.
Five percent. Ten percent is about thirty-eight thousand.
Assuming thirty eight-
So five percent is nineteen thousand.
Three hundred and eighty thousand a year is, is, is an accurate guesstimate.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think for nine, nineteen thousand a year, on average, you can do some significant things with the-
You can tackle problems one year at a time, yeah.
Yeah, I mean-
I agree.
Well, and if you, if we do this eighty-five fif- eighty-five, five, five, and five, that leaves another nineteen thousand dollars-
To be convinced on, yeah.
-to solve big problems with.
Right.
Or little problems with.
Or little prob- or a bunch of little problems with, yeah, sure.
Yeah, I feel really good about that. Do we have, do we need to write that up in some, what would that be written up as? A resolution, or?
Yeah.
I think you would just say it's your, it's your planning policy, that, that this is your intent, and then I'd suggest that, you know, we spend the money when we have actual, you know, specific-
Right, and then I think the next, next discussion we have next time is, what acceleration of, of, of the project can be made as far as the park goes, and the same with the museum, what can, accelerations can be done there.
Sounds good.
Just so we can get, we can get an idea of what the spring looks like for parks and for the Whittaker Museum. Of course, I'm gonna advocate the five percent, keep, the, the contingency head towards Whittaker, just so we can knock out some of the things they've been waiting for a while, so, but, you know, when, when we get to that point, we can figure out what the policy is. I don't necessarily wanna go to a huge grant process, um, like Bountiful has, especially where someone like, uh, Whittaker is a, Whittaker is a city-owned property.
Sure.
It's all, you know, that makes more sense for arts organizations, but I don't know that necessarily we're gonna have a huge competition in Centerville for arts dollars. Are we?
No, I mean, we, we-
Unless the storytellers get out there en masse and apply.
We specified in the, when it went to the voters, we were pretty specific, so I don't think we've got a whole lot of availability of sending it other places in those three-
Right, I just like that it gives us flexibility to go throughout the year and see what the needs are, and, yeah.
Yeah, ideally, I'd like to get the park accelerated, figure out how we can do that, and knock off the, the top two or three safety issues at, at Whittaker, just get it done as a package deal.
So that's agenda item for next year.
Lighting, pathway.
Yeah, that's probably top of the list.
Some office things where it's really dangerous over there would be a good thing, too. That's a fun tour.
So, yeah, I mean, we're not gonna resolve everything, but at least if we can agree to those bucket sizes, we've got, we've now set expectations for the performing arts, so they understand where it's gonna be.
Yeah, sounds good.
So I think you could, uh, make a motion that from a planning perspective, the council intends to allocate eighty-five percent of the rap tax towards, uh, parks and trails, uh, five percent towards the museum, uh, with a special emphasis on trying to take, tackle safety issues first, five percent towards theater, um, related projects, and five percent contingency to be evaluated on a project-by-project basis, and, and give that as a guideline to, to, to staff to plan for.
Right, and on the theater, we're talking specifically fixed asset repairs for the facility, right?
Correct, so the challenges are, our HVAC contract is more than, more than nineteen thousand, isn't it?
Oh, it's right around there.
Right, is it around there?
I think it's right around there, that's the, you know what he's talking about on the HVAC.
Yeah, which to, to me is a very facility-specific-
It's a building pres- it's a critical building preservation activity, that's one I would suggest you could tie it to.
Sure. Can I, can I make a request that as we go through the year, and we, haven't we already spent a little bit of rap tax money?
We have.
Mm-hmm.
Several nickels and dimes in various places.
Several thousand nickels and dimes.
So, can, can we make a re- can I make a request that we, anytime a new proposal comes forward, we've got a list that says, here's where we are, and here's what we spent, and here's where we're going, so we, so we don't have to try and remember?
I've actually done that in a staff report last time round, but I'll, uh, I can do it on a regular basis whenever we're spending-
Thank you, I'd appreciate that.
I think we can, I mean, we've added a-
Well, and we'll ha- we can make it more clear in categories.
We've added a fund to our financial report where we have-
Sure.
Uh, some of those.
But having it broken into the categories would be helpful, right?
Yeah, the three categories.
Okay, so let, let me go ahead and make the motion, then, that we do eighty-five percent, we're, we're at, for administrative purposes, we're defining the, the distribution of the rap taxes as eighty-five percent to parks and trails, five percent to the Whittaker Museum, with emphasis on safety repairs first, five percent to capital improvements or maintenance for the Performing Arts Center, and five percent contingency to be distributed at the council's discretion through further defined procedure or policy.
Nice of the state.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded further discussion on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously.
You guys got there quicker than I thought.
Well, now we have to, now we have to figure out how to accelerate the park in Whittaker next time, but-
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's helpful for, now that you've made this, I can use that eighty-five as we figure out how are we gonna do it.
Yeah.
And then I'm gonna say Whittaker's a park, right, 'cause we calculated in our park spaces, so we'll stuff it in there.
Okay, next, uh, item, the mayor's report should be relatively, uh, short, hopefully you had a chance to, to review the COG tax presentation. I'd also, uh, we added this late, but there's a very good, uh, YouTube video that was added to this, where Curtis is explaining the property tax, uh, process, that I think is helpful as residents try to understand, uh, property taxes, uh, and, my understanding is, the county is bringing this up now because they plan on a budget year, or on a calendar year-
Calendar.
-for their budget, so they're saying, look, we're gonna, we're gonna plan this, and it's gonna hit you next, next year, in your next, uh, next year's taxes, not in, of course, the tax notices that are already out now. Um, but I, I wanted to share that with you, there was a, a lively discussion at COG about, uh, appropriate uses within the county, you know, the sheriff's department always is brought up, as, uh, in that area.
How so?
That's, oh, there's, there's, like any law enforcement, there's an unending need for, for, for more people, for more tools, for more functions, if you ask any law enforcement, but especially the sheriff, they'll say they're understaffed, they need more people, they need more resources. Uh, many of the mayors, uh-
Fire and police.
Fire.
Same, same.
There's, we always need more firemen, always need more policemen, I, I think our chief does a very good job of trying to keep that, um, a balance, that the fire department is always asking for more. The, there's still a very, uh, lively disagreement, I think, between some cities in the county that have their own fire and paramedic services, and others that use the county, that there is a significant subsidy by us to, to, to those who use the county for their services, that they're not being, that we, we are subsidizing, um, paramedic services in other parts of the, uh, part of the county.
We're not getting our fair share of the paramedic dollars, whether you, we base it on population, number of calls, or property values, the, uh, paramedic dollars from the county do not measure up to that, and we've had this, uh, discussion with the commissioners, but-
So, so if you see our new, uh, commissioner that we expect to get, uh, elected, Mr. Elliott, feel free to bring that up with him, I, I do every time I see him. Uh, I also wanted to compliment Jake on, uh, putting together another, another, uh, metrics packet for the past year, we're starting to get a pretty good database of, of, uh, information, so I appreciate his, his efforts there.
Thank you.
That's everything from my side, so, Steve, let's turn it to the city manager's report, and I think the most interesting item of the, uh, of the night.
We already had the most interesting item. We promise it doesn't get any more interesting than this tonight.
Okay, everybody would like to know what's gonna happen to the interchange someday.
Please not like Lehigh or like-
What, what's that, the divergent diamond interchange?
Constant velocity flow.
I, I think the divergent diamond at Fifth South has improved things signif- or at Fifth South and Twenty-Six Hundred have improved traffic flow significantly.
Twenty-Six Hundred is terrible.
For those who drive on the correct side of the road, yes.
I should start by saying that UDOT has really made a significant investment in studying this matter. Um, and I, you know, as of six months ago, I don't think there was an intent to study this matter this soon, but because of, uh, constant pressure we apply, have applied on them about our parish lane congestion and our interchange concerns, they included this interchange in the same study that- they included this interchange in the same study that they have four or five other interchange that are earlier on the plan, if you will. This, this wasn't one of those that is imminent, and they needed to do this study in order to stay on schedule. But I will say that I think that because they've done this study, I am hopeful that it will move up on the plan sooner than it was showing before. On the long-range transportation plan, the replacement of the interchange was in the second ten-year period. I'm hopeful, even though they, they would not respond to, when I ask this question, uh, where are you thinking now this would fall? They won't tell you that, because they can't tell you that as staff members. They, they go through a yearly process of, within UDOT, of prioritizing the needs and in putting that into the, uh, regional plan, and they won't make that commitment, obviously, till they go through that process. But I am optimistic that we may see it in the first ten years of the plan at some point, uh, here soon, in the next round of update, perhaps. Don't quote me, don't, don't hold me to that, 'cause they didn't say that, but, uh, I have, uh, reason to think that may be the case. Uh, so, th- they had the four-hour session with us, that the consultants they've hired have been doing lots of work, traffic accounts and so forth, and studies and analysis, and we had that four-hour session that city staff attended some time ago, and then, and I reported on that to you. And it was narrowed down to two concepts that they've studied further, and that's what the three-hour session was about this past week that city staff attended. The two concepts that were studied further was the SPUI, Single Point Urban Interchange, and the, um, diamond, basically preserving the general framework that's there now, which is called a diamond interchange. If you've had a chance to look at these drawings, you know that, that the cheaper one is the diamond interchange, uh, that's forty-nine, fifty million dollars in today's dollars, or two thousand eighteen dollars, and the other one, the SPUI, is seventy-four million dollars in today's, today's dollars. In both cases, they have incorporated the concept of the bypass to the frontage road. This is the SPUI, and in this case, it's a, it's a tunnel bypass. So you come off and you go under parish.
The off-ramp, uh, going northbound would start earlier than it does today, right? It would start earlier and then split into two.
Well, yeah, the tunnel began, you know, you, you stay on this, into this lane to go through the tunnel, it goes under, and it ends up over here at the frontage road, where there'd have to be a traffic signal. That would take a lot of pressure off of parish. And the diamond also has a bypass, but it's an o- it's an at-grade bypass. Jake, wanna put that up there? We're gonna toggle back and forth, Jake, between these two. They're both on the same one, aren't they? So, in this case, the bypass is you stay on the off-ramp, and you go straight across at the light, and then down to there.
And is this one the diamond?
That's the diamond.
And the first one is the SPUI, right?
But it's not a divergent diamond.
Right.
Right.
Just very much like we have now.
Yeah, in, in rough frame, framework, yeah.
So, a little bit wider, and then the other major change is this diversion's onto the frontage road.
Say that again?
So the.
Both, both of them would have a bypass that connects to the frontage road north of McDonald's.
Right.
But in the SPUI, it would be a tu- tunnel.
Right.
Goes under parish, and on the diamond, it would be at-grade, and you come cross parish at the light there.
Either way is an improvement over the scissoring that goes on there, so.
Yeah, take a lot of traffic off that would be turning at Marketplace, or trying to turn at Marketplace.
So, with, with that bypass, are they looking at, uh, what the industrial uses are going to be over our frontage road, as far as, like, diverting traffic? Semis, things like that, or are they anticipating a huge increase in, in commercial volume? Or are they just saying it's just a straight diversion to mitigate traffic flow?
It's, it's, uh, yeah, it's not intended to, uh, it's intended to address, really, peak commute times. That's, that's what they're focusing on.
'Cause that is the only advantage of the, the current design, is people don't use that as their, the freeway slowing down, I'm gonna pull off on Market and head off to the frontage road. This, I'm just saying that this incentivizes you when you see slow traffic to take the frontage road as your, as your alternate.
Maybe if you live in Farmington, where, where do you get back on?
Yeah, but you, today you wouldn't, well, you might today, drive up to Main Street and cut down, but.
Which is pretty, pretty challenging to get back on Farmington.
Now, there's a, there's a difference in impact on adjoining properties with these two plans. The one that actually has the biggest impact and results in the biggest taking of property is the diamond. Uh, because the, uh, at-grade bypass would require more, uh, footprint, encroaching into Seven-Eleven, for example, and a little bit into In-N-Out and Carl's Jr.
How little a bit?
Well, they, you know, e- essentially, Seven-Eleven would be, probably have to be bought out, is what they're saying, under that scenario.
This project just lost my support.
I, I, I don't see it would have to be bought out, but you'd have to buy.
Well, that's what they're saying.
That's what they're saying.
Because it would, uh, take off the car wash and also encroach from the south side substantially. And to, to the point where it might render the, the business non-viable. So, doesn't mean you wouldn't have another business there, perhaps, but the existing business. This is their, this is their tentative conclusion. This is not hard and fast, or the final. What I'm telling you about takings is just a preliminary kind of judgment from them about that.
What about on the west side?
On the west side? Um, no, they have to widen the railroad, replace the railroad bridge. I think in both of these scenarios, the railroad bridge gets replaced with a wider bridge. But it doesn't have any impact beyond, you, you see the, the limits there on the west side. Now, what about on parish? On parish, um, both plans envision a ten-foot combined bicycle and pedestrian pathway on the north side for the first couple of, of blocks here. Now, from here on down, it becomes more difficult, and, uh, if you want to preserve much of the landscaping, that's yet to be, uh, that, that has to have further analysis at some point in the future. We don't need to go there at this time, but.
So, the pedestrian bridge, we could write to this this time?
Uh, the pedestrian pathway would be right, incorporated into the, the, the new structure. Wouldn't be a separate structure.
The trails committee's already saying that it's really dangerous going past the entrance and exit of the freeway. I agree with that.
Well, and, and that would be the case with, uh, this as well, I mean, you can't.
But less dangerous than it was last year.
Now, there was some discussion in this meeting about a separate structure for pedestrians, perhaps up at, uh, kinda the, um.
Why'd they have Farmington?
Chase Lane area, somewhere, somewhere up that way, wasn't it? Well, you weren't there, were you? Or further south of this structure, but further south is kind of, is not as central, if you will, to the use by pedestrians, so if it was gonna be a separate structure, probably.
Central, and then we just have this connection to Legacy, which is one of the major reasons people wanna go over.
But, but that's, that, that's not part of the plan, that was just some conversation about alternatives to handle pedestrians and, and bicycles.
You're saying that in both of these, they are considering the need, not only to conti- to keep the pedestrian bridge, but to help assist the getting there to be more friendly.
On that north side. The south side's very problematic to try to accommodate pedestrians.
Right, but I think we only need one designated side.
Right.
Right, so that's fine.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, now, we also, they, they, uh, did a lot of analysis of the congestion on parish at the Marketplace, uh, excuse me, yeah, at the Marketplace intersection and the Four Hundred West intersection, more in-depth analysis there. And evaluated specifically double-left turns on parish at both intersections to, to go northbound, and double-left turns on Marketplace and Four Hundred West, going north to turn west onto parish. And it is problematic to add a, add a second left-turn lane on parish at both of those intersections for people to go north on Marketplace or Four Hundred West. Uh, acquisition of a diff- additional right-of-way to allow merging, uh, within a safe distance on, on the two north legs, um, plus some right-of-way issues on parish itself. They believe that, now, obviously, either one of these would make that unnecessary, anyway, to have a second left turns. But as an interim measure, they do believe that the double-left turns on Marketplace, from Marketplace to parish, and from Four Hundred West to parish, so northbound, a dub- going north, double-left to go west on parish. At both of those intersections, Marketplace and Four Hundred West, would help the situation, the current congestion. So, those are ideas that are gonna be pursued further. In fact, we submitted with our con- our letter of intent, I mentioned this to you in the last meeting. Letter of intent was due on October twenty-seventh. We put that, pro- those projects in our letter of intent.
Can I ask, did you say that backwards? Because don't you mean going from parish to, onto Marketplace?
Well, I said that was the other aspect they evaluated, but they say that's problematic and not realistic because of the right-of-way needs that you would have.
But I've never really noticed a problem with too bad of backup and congestion going from Marketplace onto parish.
Well, the secret there is that it allows more green time on parish.
It's, it's bad in the mornings. It is, it's really bad.
So, i- if you can get double lefts on northbound to go west.
So you just get the same number of cars done in a shorter amount of time?
Yes, and then reallocate the timing of the signals.
And then they're red, and so they're staying put, and then parish can go longer. That makes sense, okay.
Yeah, and that was an idea that was actually, um.
Good thing there's engineers.
Me- mentioned some years, several years ago, when we were talking with them about solutions, um, so.
Steve, I, I would respectfully disagree with the double-left turns, although they, they make a difference during that prime traffic time. They cause delay the rest of the day, because you cannot turn left.
Would have to be a, because it's a protected, rather than a permitted-protected.
Yeah.
And, yeah, yeah, it, it probably does accelerate things to a degree in those two hours, but it slows it down the rest of the day.
And from my perspective, I've always trained to make sure we're being as pedestrian-friendly as possible. Any widening of an intersection is just a nightmare for pedestrians, so.
When do they?
I know we have very real traffic problems to deal with, but it's difficult.
Well, we'll just leave our density alone, we won't have any more traffic, we'll be okay, so, right?
Well, I, I, I think that's, to me, the most interesting thing is looking at their statistics, that they look at time delays, twenty-forty no build and twenty-forty concept. Even if you build this, the delays are gonna go up, uh, if you're looking that far out.
Mm-hmm.
They don't take into consideration this council's ability to stop anyone from moving in, but, uh.
And again, Walmart has caused more traffic problems than a lot of things, and it was, it got put in place on an anti-density move.
So those are the, those are the highlights, I, I would say, are the, out of these plans to note.
When do they move to their next phase in planning? As far as the impact study, environmental impact, all that, when, what's their next phased date that they have announced?
They won't, they haven't announced that.
Probably not, until we get on their calendar.
And they may not tell us, right?
No, Kevin tried to get out of them some kind of a response as to when would the next step be taken, and they, they're unwilling to comment at this point. But Kevin's personal guess is that they might be doing an initial environmental review in the next year or two.
Really?
Yeah. Anyway, that's my report.
Thank you. Uh, miscellaneous business. Uh, I don't see any on our agenda. Does anyone have any miscellaneous business?
Not at a cemetery.
Which I think becomes an agenda item for next time, right?
I think you have to have something you can act on. So do you really, is this council really serious about, uh?
Well, it's, uh, either that or a work session, we gotta figure something out.
Oh, I think it's gonna become huge.
It's gonna be enormous, and it's not gonna take very many weeks, either.
Yeah, I'm, when, when you've got your old parents who've lived here their whole life, and you just assume you're gonna call the city and bury them, and they're being told, sorry.
And there's no space, you gotta go to Bountiful.
Let, let, let me.
The dad is not gonna be nice very long before they tell us to.
Well, they have a private cemetery there that's happy to take your money.
Yeah, but how for, how long's it gonna be able to take all of us?
And just to keep in mind that most cities in Davis County do not have their own cemeteries. They're served by private cemeteries, or they go to other cities that have public cemeteries, uh, until those cities cut them off, as, as we did.
They're the same ones.
Yeah, I think there's only like four or five cities in, uh, Dave- of the fifteen in Davis County that actually have their own cemetery, so.
There's just all the ones that.
So, so North Salt Lake, and Woods Cross, and West Bountiful. I'm not aware of cemeteries in those.
Well, you said, West Bountiful?
And we do already, we do already.
Bountiful has a one.
Bountiful has one, but it's West.
Is it a public, see, that, that's the, the, yeah, no, there's other cemeteries.
Kay'sville and.
Kay'sville has one, so maybe five.
I, I've, I've been advocating we should solve this problem, but, uh, you know, if you, if you do the lower part of, uh, Island View Park, which I think would be great.
That's only a few spots, too. We, I mean, we have.
Ten years, maybe fifteen.
Well, maybe that's your, Island View Park becomes your mausoleum area, and you, you space it rather than just, you know, ground plots.
Well, we talked, speaking of mausoleums, we'll, I'll share this idea with you, 'cause we had this conversation, you know, just a week ago with Bruce.
And Kevin, it was.
And Kevin.
Kevin, who had some good ideas.
Uh, Seven Hundred East, is that the street in front of you, Stephanie? It's pretty wide. You could, uh, can build a mausoleum into that east side of the cemetery using part of that right-of-way there, the length of the cemetery.
There's extra street, right-of-way.
Yeah, I mean, widen the, the street at the top of the cemetery and to create mausoleum in that.
Narrow the street.
Narrow the street. There's ten extra feet already on the west side.
When you're inside the cemetery, there's a road on the east side, so we're talking up against that.
Uh-huh, the east side of the road.
Yeah, that area.
So you already have the elevation change.
Which would, which would work well, but then line up with the properties on the south where the road.
Right, 'cause that's where it goes, the whole length of the cemetery, yeah.
So, so it sounds like we need a work, work session for that piece.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it, it would be good to get it done before they finish up their conceptual design, and we say, trash half your design.
But that doesn't affect the park.
It doesn't affect the park.
That's already part of the cemetery, and.
Oh, you said, oh, okay, I know what you're talking about now. You, okay, it's the push on the wall, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, and so what we could do is ask staff to get serious about finding out numbers on what something like that would cost, 'cause we already own the land, we already own the right-of-way. We can just figure out what utilities are in the way, if there are any, and what cost it would be.
And it's premium view, so you can charge.
Plus, we can ta- we've talked about, we've talked about exploring a public private partnership possibly with, I don't know how that might work, but.
You got a lot of work for staff.
Pull me up.
Yeah.
You, you guys are really loading up staff here.
It's what we do.
Do we, do we have a work session on, uh?
Next time?
The fifteenth?
Well, we would need to give staff time to get some serious.
No, I, I'm talking about.
Well, that's a whole fourteen days.
Looking at the top of, uh.
You're talking about go, well, a field trip?
A field trip.
Yeah, field trip's easy to plan.
To up the hill.
We can take you on the mountain side.
Field, field trip with numbers?
Field trip would be good.
The term with numbers is problematic.
Tell you how many acres.
I'll see if I can borrow the chief's.
Yeah, if, if you send the chief's new razors.
I could take three of you in the razor.
So, so.
I'll find one that used to go with me.
This sounds like a YouTube event in the making.
Do you guys want a field trip in two weeks?
Yes.
To the Island View and the hillside?
Depending on, depending on the weather.
On the weather. On the weather, depending on the weather.
Yes.
And the first south.
Okay, field trip it is.
We don't have another early meeting that night?
Well, we do now.
Now it's our field trip.
No, I, I, I thought that last week was the only one we had off all year.
No, we've been putting off Randy on his.
Randy is not ready to come back on.
New decant building as long as possible. I'd like to put him off another two years.
He's, he's doing more homework on that, so when he's ready, he's supposed to come to me, and we'll look at, I'll look at it with him, and then we'll bring it to you guys.
So, do we have a time for that?
Hmm, wow.
I'll probably do five o'clock, so that it's got enough.
So, we've got some daylight to work with?
Can you make it at five?
We changed the time.
So, it's going to be darker.
It'll be darker, that's true.
It's going to be dark. It's going to be dark at five.
No matter what. That's not good, huh?
So, can we get one of our ghost tour guides to come with us and get a twofer on that?
We have to do Saturday field trip.
You'd have to do it this, this Saturday, and, uh, everyone should go up and, and visit it before, because isn't the, uh, isn't the time changed this weekend?
So, that means it would be dark when?
About five.
Five, five fifteen.
About five.
Really?
Yeah, it should be twilight by then at least.
At least twenty.
So, if it's dark, I don't.
It won't do much good.
I don't think it does much good.
Okay.
Well, I say, I say we talk about the mausoleum. That's something concrete, that's something I think doable if we get numbers and explore how we might be able to pay for that. It's connected to the existing cemetery, and then we say it still is one of our goals for two thousand sixteen, bleeding into two thousand seventeen, to explore the hillside options, to start more seriously looking at that.
Or the park, or the.
Yeah.
I can give you some orientation in that work session on the hillside, using contour maps and that kind of thing, so you know what acreage we have, what the slopes are.
And if, we talked before about the county possibly participating and running a trail in that area.
Yeah, I, I would like to invite our commissioners to go with us, as, as I think if we're looking at trying to keep that as open recreation long-term, that we need their partnerships.
So, we're talking about Saturday?
What, oh, I thought we were back to a work session.
Well, if the county, if they're going with us. I haven't got anything with the county set up, but maybe we could try to find a, a time.
I think we should at some point with the county as far as hillside.
Well, let's be reasonable on what we can chew off. So, I, I would suggest that we do a work session for next time specifically trying to get, be, be really serious about the mausoleum.
So, Steve is saying he doesn't think he can have those figures sprayed.
That's right, so as soon as we can.
We. Okay.
Unless you feel it, can you really?
No, no, I, I won't have good numbers for. But if you want to talk conceptually and get oriented as to what's there, you can use maps or aerials, photos.
Because we have, we have two possibilities. We've talked about that west side of lawn as well, that Bruce has explored that for a long time. I think he has some pretty good numbers already on that.
On the what?
Side of what?
The, the west side of lawn before it dips down.
The southwest corner of the cemetery.
Southwest corner.
Just the mid, the middle of the west side of the cemetery, where it's just lawn right now. Bruce has always talked about doing mausoleum there.
That's where my spot is.
I, I, I don't know of any.
So, there's, there is a, a space where you could put it before the cemetery drops off. I, I think.
That's the one that he talked to us about last time.
We should, we should have that discussion with Bruce. I mean, Bruce is our.
Okay.
Our cemetery director.
Yeah, and, and I can bring some aerials and contour maps of the hillside, if you want any introduction to that, basic information.
Frankly, I, I, I think that our, our citizens are, are going to have to have a few, I mean, understand that there's challenges in order to get the type of public support that would be necessary to raise the money
Yeah.
to, to do some of these things. So, I'm not opposed.
Well, we should, we shouldn't do unless it's going to pay for itself.
Right.
But initial capital is what you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't have a need for a closed meeting, but I do have some appointments I'd, I'd like to suggest. Number one is Lynn Kettington, I think was in your packet, that we missed his, uh, reappointing him. He has served just one term, so I'd, uh, look for a motion to reappoint Lynn Kettington to the Parks and Rec Committee.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, I did not have confirmation from Jeannie Randall from the, her term is expired on the Landmarks Commission. Who is our landmarks, uh?
That would be me. She sounds very like she's in it for the long haul. In our, in our last meeting, when we were talking, we were talking about how she was arranging her schedule, so she would be able to work on the next.
Okay. So, should we, Brian Plummer was trying to see if he could get confirmation, but I'm comfortable reappointing her contingent on her willingness to serve. Normally, we limit people to two terms on the committee, but the landmarks, I.
There's a learning curve that goes with some of that.
I, I'd be happy to, to reappoint her to another third term on the landmarks, if she's willing to serve. So.
I'd be comfortable with that.
Would you make a motion to reappoint Jeannie Randall to that contingent on her willingness to serve another term?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Last, you have on your desk an application from Kathy Helgason. Kathy served on our Planning Commission back in the Walmart time period. And I s, uh, talked with her. She had to resign from the Planning Commission due to, she was called as a Young Women's President in two thousand five, I think it was, and, and did not serve a full two terms. Uh, she was, is interested in serving again. Uh, she.
So, she did resign.
She did resign. I confirmed that, but, uh, at the time, but she has since reconsidered and, and said she would give it one more, one more try. She's, in, in my opinion, done this before, so.
How does she feel about residential density?
I, I, I did not ask her, but she certainly understands the, the challenge and the.
The temperature?
The, the, the temperature and the, uh, having been through the clamor of something the public is very opposed to, I, I feel confident that she would make good, measured decisions. So, I'd recommend her for, to be appointed to the Planning Commission to fill Scott Kier's spot.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any questions or further discussions?
I'd almost like to meet her first.
So, I, I appreciate that, that the council basically gets an up or down.
Well, they get advice and consent.
Advice and consent.
So, they can't, I can see that if you haven't met them. How can you advise or consent?
You don't remember?
I don't know.
But I, I respect the mayor's role in choosing appointees, and I don't see a problem. We have someone willing, and we have an opening, and she has experience having done it before.
She lives on, in Carrington Lane, which is, uh.
It's a good mix of where people are located.
We, we don't have many people from the north end on, on the Planning Commission right now. Single-family neighborhood. She's been through these challenges before, so I'd like your support.
I'll second it.
If, if you're not going to support it, then you want to talk to her first, then I, I understand. So, it's moved and seconded. Further discussion?
I'd really like to meet her.
Okay.
I'm a little concerned about her Planning Commission gelling and, I don't know. I'd, I'd feel more comfortable if I'd met her. It's hard for me to say yes when I don't know, but.
I, I spoke with Cory. Cory's opinion was she's, uh, she's done this before. She, she was very good, very thoughtful in her approach. He was surprised she was willing to serve again after Walmart, where it was a very, uh, very challenging situation. That was his, uh, response. So, with that, I guess I'll call for a vote. Those in favor of, of the motion to appoint Kathy to the Planning Commission?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm not opposed.
I'm not opposed. I'd just like to meet her.
Yeah.
Can we, can we table this appointment for, for, till the next time, and have her just drop by for a few minutes?
You can table it. I, I'm concerned about setting the precedence that you've got to, you know, this isn't, this isn't the Senate where you, where you come and.
But you do, though, advice and consent. This is the only time you have to say yes or no throughout the term. See, the council can't remove a commissioner.
Correct.
They can't remove a board member, so this is the only time the council has to say whether or not they, they, they really approve of an appointment.
So, I'm fine with, with you contacting her, but I, I think, uh, I'm uncomfortable with setting the precedent that every time we have a new member of a board, that they come and have to make their case to the, to the Planning Commission. But I, I respect that you don't know her.
Not necessarily, though. Just that the Planning Commission has a lot of authority, and we struggled recently, and I, I'm.
And, and I took your concerns that you expressed about another person that applied and, and encouraged a change there. So, I feel like I'm trying to be responsive to, to some extent. But, uh, the, for, for some of you, I, I, I'm not going to put a person on there who's
kind of.
Maybe, maybe, maybe your ideal candidate.
But it's not the Senate, so, see, there shouldn't be that conflict. This is, this is the whole crux of the matter, I think, is, is if, if the council is to be supportive of a board appointee, they should know who they are and be able to say, yeah, I mean, this, these are long-term appointments.
And I take responsibility of not getting this to you sooner.
And I think that, um, the most important thing is process. The Planning Commission really is not supposed to be a political body, and they're not supposed to be someone who comes in with already a viewpoint of the world and how everything should be, but should be very knowledgeable and understanding and respectful of the process. And when I look at this experience that she's had, um, serving on many different kinds of committees and service positions, I see that, I don't know this person personally, but she's interested, she's willing, and she has past experience in understanding in heated situations. You have to make decisions based on the law and the process, and that's what's important to me.
I think those are good invalid points. I just think that a city council shouldn't be a rubber stamp. And if you're going to have, if you're going to have legal language that says advice and consent, then it has to be of some reasonable caliber.
Sure. I certainly haven't felt that this council is a rubber stamp.
No, no. Why make sure that was not, not inferred?
That, that is not.
And it's no, it's no reflection on, on, on her either. It's, it's not. It's just, it's, it's a procedural thing that we haven't really talked about. This, this is the Planning Commission. It's, it's a, it's, Stephanie says it's an important body, and it has a lot of authority in, in the city. And whether or not they should be apolitical or not, in theory, so are Supreme Court justices. They're apolitical and look at only the law, but they don't. They look at social trends. They, they are influenced by, by their background, so I, I think it's, I think it's a fair argument.
You, you do make a fair argument. My question then is, this feels very vague to me. So, then if we are going to set this precedent, um, what is that caliber that you're setting? I think that there should be a, a process or a system or something that, tangible, that you can say, this is what we're checking for, and this is what would make us feel more comfortable. Otherwise, I think it's.
I, I don't think you're ever going to get that, because.
I don't think so either.
Let Ms. Tess, if, if you would like to call and, and, and speak with, uh, with her, I'll, uh, this, uh, we need three votes to pass, and we only got two. I'll respect that.
Give it, give it, give it a week and let people call and talk to her, and then call and follow up with you.
I think one advantage to this would be she would feel like we all supported her. I think, I'm worried that we're not getting, we're not meshing like I think we should. Maybe we shouldn't be meshing, but, but so maybe she would realize that, that we really do support her, and we really do validate all of our, all of our Planning Commission. But I know when I get put in leadership positions, if I choose the person that's under me, sometimes they just perform because they respect the fact that I thought they could do it. So, maybe that will just make things a little bit better between the two boards.
Great. Well, I, I hope you will, uh, take the opportunity to, to contact her.
And I appreciate the opportunity, and I'm, and I'm delighted that there are people who are willing.
So, can, can we table?
Well, it, it, the, the motion failed. I'll, I'll rule that the motion failed with only two votes and three abstentions.
Is that, to help Katie out, is that what you wanted to show is two in favor and three abstentions, and then followed up with, uh, understanding that.
Understanding that.
It's going to go on the next agenda.
Some of the.
Be reconsidered in a future meeting after there's a chance for council members to meet her on their, on their own initiative.
Could you make that sound, uh, good, Katie?
It sounded good to me.
Okay.
Thank you. Katie's really good at that.
Katie is good at that. All right, motion to adjourn?
I move, we'll go home.